Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 18th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Ms. Barrios, can you please begin with our still?
Yes, I can. Good evening. Welcome. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until a public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until the next public comment period. When called upon, you'll be promoted to a panelist. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call in our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student or S at the beginning or end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. There will be a timer displaying a countdown on screen alerting me when your time has elapsed. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando un orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10:00, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público, parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano y haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selecciona el botón levantar la mano o raise your hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. Favor de hacerlo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. Por favor, escribe estudiante o S detrás de su nombre. La presidenta de la mesa directiva votará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otra cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado, será proporcionada panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Pero un reloj que muestra una cuenta regresiva en la pantalla que le permite saber cuándo transcurrido su tiempo. Si continúa hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor estate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Can you please call the role for the Board of Education?
Student Director June Mascarini, yes, Juan.
Here.
Director Julie Saini.
Here.
Director Kai Alper.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Presente.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
President Kadeja Brown.
President, thank you so much. At this time, we need to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role once more?
Student Mascarini, yes, Juan.
Yes.
Director Saini.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
See.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you. I thank you all for joining us tonight for our school board meeting. As I look at the panelist list, I see that there are a lot of attendees to this night, to this meeting tonight, and I know that many of you all are here for this very special moment that we are about to embark on together. And so I am excited about our next agenda item, which is the appointment of the district superintendent and the approval of that employment. And so tonight, the Board of Education, of course, will be voting on that contract for our new superintendent school of schools who will serve as a prime administrator for our district in this upcoming academic year and in the years to come. And so the board, as you all know, the Board of Education went on, conducted a comprehensive national search process, and that process was only made possible because of the guidance, the support, and the input from our beloved stakeholders in this very community. And so before we begin with, or before we say another word, we have to give a word of appreciation to all of you all for helping us to reach this very moment. I am exceedingly excited to formally introduce you all to our superintendent finalists, who will officially become the superintendent of BUSD very, very soon, and that is Ms. Enikia Fortmore Thel. And as superintendent finalist for Northville comes to BUSD as a decorated administrator who currently serves as the deputy superintendent of San Francisco Unified School District, the eighth largest school district in the state of California. She comes to us as an instructional trailblazer, a dedicated educator who is committed to serving each and every child. And in fact, you may even hear her say that often. She also comes to us as a relational leader who values the importance of community and as a champion for equity in education. We on the board are impressed, inspired, and enthused by her educational philosophy and its alignment to our mission, vision, and values here in Berkeley Unified School District. Following the approval of the contract, we hope that you will join us in this excitement as we partner with our new superintendent to strive for excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment for all. At this time, is there a motion to approve the contract?
I'll move to approve the contract.
It has been moved by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It has been properly seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role?
Yes, student Mascarini, yes, Juan.
Yes.
Director Saini.
Absolutely enthusiastically, yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Emphatically, yes.
And President Brown.
Proudly, excitingly, and enthusiastically, yes. Thank you all. The motion passes. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Fordmore Thel to please give us a few words and to officially welcome her to our school community at this time. Please join me in giving applause from your home.
Thank you. Thank you very much, President Brown, and to all the commissioners and the Berkeley community. Good evening, everyone. I am Enikia Fortmore Thel, and I am so honored to have been chosen to be the superintendent of the Berkeley Unified School District. I want to first just thank the board again for their confidence in my leadership and the many stakeholders and partners who were engaged in the superintendent search process from beginning all the way to end. In so many ways, Berkeley was where I became an adult. It is the community where I was made and fortified as a social justice urban educator, having spent both my undergraduate and graduate years as a student at the University of California at Berkeley. Go Bears! Not quite my formative years, but definitely critical in the formation of who I am. As an equity-focused leader, the place for my commitment to education as social justice in action was nurtured. There's so much that is unique and rich about Berkeley as a city, as a district, as a community, most notably the passion and engagement of the BUSD community, the dedication to equity, anti-racism, diversity, and excellence. And I am so excited to be a part of this richness yet again in this new capacity. I truly believe, I've said it before, that Berkeley Unified is uniquely positioned to be a proof point that every child, regardless of race, ethnicity, language, socioeconomic status, or zip code, can learn and thrive in the right conditions. I am incredibly humbled and really just honored for this awesome responsibility to be the steward of such a dynamic mission and vision. And I am grateful to you, Dr. Stevens, and your team for all that you have done to advance this mission to date and all the ways that you've positioned BUSD to build upon this work. I am so excited and look forward to getting to know each and every one of you in July and partnering with you and making sure that excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment is real and true for every single student in our district. Finally, yes, I must read them. Finally, I just have to appreciate my family, my husband and children, my sister and other family members who are on this call, my sororors of Delta Sigma Theta Society Incorporated, colleagues and friends who have joined tonight's meeting to witness and share this exciting moment. My village is strong and deep, and I am grateful to all of those who have poured into me and for the shoulders of the many ancestors for which I am the legacy. I am so proud to build and enhance the work of this amazing district with you, which eats review, and really to add to the legacy that is BUSD for the babies that we serve. Thank you so much for the honor and the privilege. Looking forward to serving.
And we are looking forward to serving with you. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. We know that this is the beginning of an amazing partnership and an amazing journey that we will take together. So we stand in solidarity with you, supporting you for the mission that you will bring to BUSD and for all of the ways that we will improve our educational outcomes for our students together. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, at this time, please forgive this, but there has been something that has been omitted from our agenda, and that is the report out from closed session. Vice President Babbitt, I'm sure you thought you would just get away easy today, but we do need to hear the report out from closed session. So if you are ready at this time, we will receive it.
All right, so closed session began at 5:30 today on May 18th, 2022. For item 3.1, it was moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, voted unanimously in favor. For item 3.1.2, it was also moved by Director Alper and seconded by Director Vasudev and voted unanimously in favor. For item 3.2, we heard an update and gave direction. And we've had a few special board meetings in which on the dates were May 12th, May 1st, as well as April 30th, and there is no activity to report. And that's all for the closed session report out.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. At this time, we will move to our first opportunity for public comment. As Ms. Barrios said in her opening, if you are interested in giving public comment this evening, this is the perfect time to raise your hand, because once we begin the public comment, public comment period, there will not be another opportunity to raise your hand and give a public comment to the Board of Education until the end of the meeting, and that is our second opportunity for public comments. As a reminder, if you are a student, please ensure that you put S or student at the front or at the end of your name so that you may be given priority to speak. At this time, I see 23 hands, and so we will give each person one minute to speak. And we will begin, there are 24 hands now. So we will begin our comments this evening with Yvette Falarka, and our last public commenter will be Letitia Irving from AAPAC. Okay, Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Yvette Falarka, followed by Gladys Ocampo Stout? Thank you.
President Brown, I would like to promote Ziva. It looks like she's a student.
Oh, thank you. Let's, let's begin with Ziva, please. Hi, Ziva, welcome. We'll begin right whenever you're ready, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So I really need this pro, okay, I think I'm ready. I really need this program because my family is at risk of all this COVID. This COVID cannot put my family in danger. The whole world is at risk. And it, it all depends on Virtual Academy to stay open for other kids to not get sick. For, for adults, no family should get sick. They shouldn't put themselves at risk. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ziva, and thank you for speaking to us. And Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Yvette Falarka, followed by Gladys Ocampo Stout? Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to cede my time to Edgar Salinas.
Thank you, Ms. Falarka. Ms. Barrios, if Edgar is here, we can promote Edgar at this time. Actually, Edgar is already a panelist with his hands raised. Seating on Zoom does not give the additional minute of time, but it does give the priority for that person to speak. So Edgar can go ahead and have priority to speak now, and then following Edgar's comment, we will hear Ms. Ocampo Stout.
Hi.
Hi, Edgar. We'll, we'll begin whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, go right ahead.
So my name is Edgar Salinas. I'm the dad of Ziva Salinas. She's currently on the second grade. Essentially, our family depends on K-5 assistant, you know, Virtual Academy for many reasons. Most of them are for health issues. I have two parents, one with cancer, the other one is in open heart surgery. I also have a premature son, 28 weeks. And I mean, it's tough for us. It's been really tough. However, this program has really allowed us to be safe, keep my family safe, while also providing my kid with an amazing, an amazing school. I mean, she, her education is, is just thriving under the circumstances. You know, her teachers are great, so I please implore you to please keep the Virtual Academy open. As, you know, we really rely on this. Can't stress it. So please, thank you so much.
Thank you as well, and thank you for being here. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Gladys Ocampo Stout?
Hello, thank you, President Brown.
Hi, welcome. Go right ahead whenever you're ready.
My name is Gladys Ocampo Stout, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Latinos Unidos de Berkeley. We thank the district for the bilingual presentation tonight and about the Latinx resolution and look forward to the board's discussion and commitments for closing the opportunity gap for Latinx students in BUSD. We ask that the district make a commitment to present quarterly updates regarding the Latinx resolution to the community at the school board meetings. Although the resolution is an important step, please remember that the district continues to have low reclassification rates for long-term English learners and that our community continues to see significantly opportunity, opportunity gaps in math achievement and early literacy phonics for Latinx students, not just ELL students. Latinos Unidos de Berkeley is also concerned about the departure of Superintendent Stevens and the lack of leader bilingual, Spanish bilingual district leadership. We need administrators in BUSD who are bilingual and bicultural, and we hope that you take this in consideration when hiring central office staff. We also ask for particularly this for the position of the Director of Equity and Belonging, which will play an important role in overseeing and engaging the Latinx community. We also ask the staff be hired to lead and oversee the implementation of the Latinx resolution, like a Latinx student success manager for BUSD. We would like to.
We, I'm so sorry, Ms. Ocampo Stout, if you wanted to just finish that last sentence.
We just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent, the current superintendent, and we'd also like to welcome and let the new superintendent, that we're excited to get to know her and work with her. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At next, we will have M. Gilton, followed by Tarina Blackman.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
So my name is Emily Gilton. I teach math at Berkeley High. So I've done a few back-of-the-envelope calculations that I'd like to share related to two basic demands for a contract, which are cost of living adjustment and smaller class sizes. So we cannot call any of our salary negotiations a raise unless they adjust for rising, rising inflation. The current average American inflation rate is 8.5%. So I did the calculation in our three-year contract, 1.085 to the power of three is 1.277. That means we need a 27.7% pay adjustment, not a raise, because this would not demonstrate that teachers are maybe considered more valuable than previously. This is just helping us continue to afford to live in the Bay Area. Additionally, class sizes are too high, 28, which is our average class size, is still too high, and I have classes of more than 28 students. That 28 students divided by a 58-minute period gives only two minutes with the teacher per day or 10 minutes a week. And then that's not even including that sometimes I give directing instructions. So this can be fixed with block schedules, flex periods, and smaller class sizes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Tarina Blackman, followed by Anne Song.
Hello, my name is Blackman. I am a BUSD proud teacher, have been with the district well over 11 years. I'm thankful to be here, and I am here in hopes to help you make a decision to continue the virtual program. BUSD is known for being a trailblazing district. We do believe in equity. We have lots of equity practices. And I am encouraging this board to, as soon as possible, make the right decision to continue our program. Our kids are thriving. If we make a decision to do it sooner than later, I believe that we will have high numbers with the current status of COVID at this time. If we go into this new school year without a plan, BUSD is going to miss the opportunity to be that trailblazing district who actually provides the caring support that our families need as well as other families that are looking for programs like this. It's not going away, and neither is this type of learning. So let's be the district that we say we are.
Thank you. Next, we will have Anne Song, followed by Paige.
Good evening. My name is Anne Song, and I'm here to speak to vote, to encourage you to vote to include the virtual education program in next year's budget. It's been crucial for my family with three generations in our household that includes medically fragile members, and it's a model program. In my seven years as a BUSD parent, I have never experienced a level of engagement as I have enjoyed with the virtual education program. I've been so impressed with the dedication and quality of all the educators and staff. Ms. Falarka and Ms. Jenkins have worked hard to foster a rich online community. My first and sixth graders actually show up early to their classes on their own, and they are eager to participate. The virtual education program has fostered their curiosity and empowered them to further their own education. The standard BAS program is very different and not an adequate replacement, and I hope you take the time to read the email I sent addressing the key differences. Please continue with the amazing program and educators next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Song. Before we promote Paige, I believe I saw Alasia Thompson's student with her hand raised. So can we please promote Alasia Thompson, followed by Paige?
It looks like there's one other student, Morale Elise Walker, which I can do after.
Beautiful, thank you.
So Alasia Thompson, if you can unmute, you can begin your comment. There you are.
Hello, my name is Alasia Thompson, and I am a student. From my perspective, not having online teachers would be more likely to limit a student's academic future to a certain level than to not have them. When I first started classes in Berkeley Independent Study, I was completely astonished on how much more simpler it was to ask for assistance, and I have learned so much more than I did at my old school. My teachers have inspired me to do more research about different topics, and I actually enjoy it a lot more than I did at my previous school. Without this program, me and some schoolmates I know from Ivermore School would have never accomplished as much as we currently do. Removing this program would be a misfortune to many families. Thank you.
Thank you, Alasia.
Do you want me to take the other student next, or Paige?
Yes, please. That would be perfect if we could take the other student. I don't see them on my list, so if you could help me with the introduction of their name.
Morale Elise Walker.
Okay, we will now have Morale Elise Walker, student.
Hello, my name is Morale Elise Walker, and I am a sixth grader who is in the Berkeley Independent Studies Program. Taking away this program is such a good program. I've learned so much this year, as in like I've gotten better with my writing, and I would like to personally thank my teacher, Yvette Falarka, for doing such an amazing job. I feel as if like if you take away this program, it's just gonna maybe hinder some kids who want to do better with their schoolwork, and we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. So if things get worse and schools have to close down, then there's going to be an empty gap of just uneducated kids who might not know what to do. So I'm just begging you to keep this program, because not only has it helped me so much, it could possibly help future kids who, again, we don't know what's gonna happen. So please keep this program.
Thank you, Morale. Next, we will have Paige, followed by MGP.
Hi, my name is Paige Pisano. I'm a former BAS parent for Virtual Academy. And I just want to say for people who feel that, you know, COVID's no big deal for children, that like over five, five million kids globally have lost their primary caregiver because of COVID and are living in an intergenerational household like Anne. We have, we've lost one elder during, in mid-2020, and we really feel like we can't afford to lose the other one, especially over something that is, that we know how to prevent. So when Zoom School was available, we used that. Then we moved into BAS, Virtual Academy. And then when we finally got our, a chance to get our three children back into their school, we did it. But because we weren't, so now they're in school again, but we had to subdivide our house to keep the kids and the elders, you know, separate. So I just want to say that for people, I'm grateful to BAS, the high-quality teaching, and I think it needs to remain an option for families who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have MGP, followed by Hillary Fong.
MGP, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted. Oh, let me show my video.
Okay, take your time.
Thank you. Mahogany Gillum here, the parent of Majesty and Kingston Burgess. And I want to first thank the teachers, Yvette, and Mr. Lee and the rest of the staff there at the School Heidi Weber. And I also would like to congratulate the superintendent. But due to my daughter, I'd like first to highlight Her Majesty Burgess Gillum, who ran to that school for safety due to children bullying her and the staff that was not even trained for so much of the fighting and everything that was going on, that they even reached out to me and asked me, how could I get a community that looks like me? To, you know, to calm down, in other words. I don't think that there's enough training for the staff and for the children that need the attentive care. Damn, 30 seconds, seemed like it's over with.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Did you want to finish your last sentence?
I do. I just want to say the staff needs to stay there, the students, my daughter's life has changed, and so has my son. This is a service that needs to continue, especially with gas prices on the rise. If you stay down the street and you got to get somebody somewhere, $7 is too high. It's only, it's only common sense to keep this program there in place with the staff that is currently there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Hillary Fong, followed by Erica Hernandez.
Hillary Fong, can you unmute and do your comment?
Given the opportunity to. Thank you. Um, okay, should I start first?
Yes, please go right ahead. Thank you.
President Brown, okay. Hello, everybody. My name Hello, everybody. My name is Hillary Fong, and I love being a teacher at Berkeley High School. Please support BFT's proposal for smaller class sizes and higher salaries, as well as those of my classified colleagues in BCC-E. I know we all want a safe learning environment for all our students, and my classified colleagues in BCC-E are an essential part to our campus safety. My largest class size is, or my largest class is 30, and my smallest is 23. While I am fortunate to teach in the U9, which works hard to support ninth graders, by limiting class sizes, this is not the case of the rest of my colleagues at Berkeley High, who have rosters into their 30s. Even in my smallest class, my students need and benefit from so much one-on-one support. I am also on the BSD Ethnic Studies Committee, and we discuss the strong, the need for strong teachers. This speaks to BFT's proposal for fair compensation. We need to ensure that all teachers serving this district can remain living in Berkeley or near Berkeley forever. Okay, done.
That was perfect. Thank you so much. Erica Hernandez, followed by Kinchen.
Hi, hello. Hello, my name is Erica Hernandez, and I am a special education teacher at Berkeley High School. I want to speak on behalf of the BFT Contract Proposal Regarding Pay for IEP, Individualized Education Program Meetings that falls outside the duty day. Our duties as special education teachers require that we teach specialized classes, write IEPs, assess students, support them in their classes, collaborate with teachers, and organize meetings in a timely fashion in order to stay in compliance, since the IEP is a legal mandate. We're often working outside our contracted times, and we're routinely having to schedule meetings outside our contracted times, as families are often unable to meet during the school day, and teachers who are required at IEP meetings are teaching during contracted times. We cannot be in legal compliance without participation. So paying participants for IEP meetings outside our workday is critical for increasing teacher participation and to alleviating the high turnover rate in special education. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we'll have Kinchen, followed by Rosa Garcia.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that we continue to be in the midst of a disaster here with COVID-19. And in that context, and as the board considers the budget, I wanted to speak in solidarity with virtual teachers and for those students and families who are still using virtual education. I work in emergency management, and we know that in disasters, the most vulnerable are those who suffer the worst outcomes and those who get left behind. In wildfires and earthquakes, it's the disabled, the elderly, those with the greatest economic disadvantages who don't make it out. COVID-19 has been a really bad disaster for Berkeley, especially those who are the most vulnerable. And as you know, and others have said, one of the greatest things about Berkeley and Berkeley Unified is that we don't leave people behind. And the work of this board and BSD staff has shown us that time and time again. So despite all these challenges, leaving people behind doesn't sit well with us. And so for those who need to seek virtual learning, virtual teaching, or virtual meetings at this time, whether it's kids, family members, teachers, staff, or board members, these are all members of our community, and we cannot leave them behind. So we need to keep these programs. Lastly, I just wanted to say, I do, I want to support BFT and other school workers and their demands for cost sizes, class sizes, and cost of living adjustments. You on the board and day as teachers have our children's futures in your hands.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Han Feng, followed by Laura Rivas.
All right, Rosa Garcia is next. I promoted her already.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. And then we'll follow the same order after that.
Hi, my name is Rosa, oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Rosa Garcia. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I have my daughter Siva Salina, who just spoke a little bit earlier. I'm just here to, yes, once again, try to encourage you guys to keep the Virtual Academy open. This program is really important for us, for all the family, and that will be one less thing that we need to, the, we could be worrying about because we have so much stuff going around us, our family and stuff that we're going through, that just keeping that, just knowing that the program's gonna continue is one less thing that we need to worry about and try to figure out what we're gonna do with that daughter next year. Yes, please, that's just consider just keeping, keeping it open. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Han Feng, followed by Laura Rivas.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Han Feng, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner, actually coming in, and a fifth grader at Sylvia Mendez. I am also, I'm also here to support Nikki, who has been a friend, a collaborator, a boss, even though she hates it when I call her that. And I am so excited that she's going to be here and shepherding Eve and, sorry, and although, and this district. She is not only relational and a community-connected person, she is strongly instructional, strongly believing in bringing the community together. And it's dinner time. And you will see a coherence, an instructional coherence, a coherence of community and connectedness. So I'm super excited, Nikki. I'm sad that we're not gonna see you at SFUSD, but I'm so excited I'll see you here in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Laura Rivas, followed by Diane Renella.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, so we can hear you. Okay, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Brown. My name is Laura Rivas, and I'm here as a member of Latinos Unidos de Berkeley and also parent to second and sixth grader. I want to extend a really warm welcome to Anika Ford-Mortell to the Berkeley community, and I'm also enthusiastically looking forward to partnering with you to advance anti-racism and equity initiatives in our school. I want to thank the District for investing funds and strong parent engagement work through groups like PK. We've heard from many Latinx families that they feel committed to helping their children succeed and set them on a pathway to college after those sessions. I also want to see more traction on meaningful family and community engagement for the multilingual master plan and bilingual and bicultural Latinx staffer Puente Longfellow. Finally, I want to invite you all to listen to the stories of struggle and triumph from our diverse Latinx community, from our newcomer families to multi-generational families with deep roots. Being a culturally responsive district means learning from one another and practicing cultural humility. Language creates access, and as my good friend Ms. Jocelyn Forman would say, access creates range, and our families deserve access and range. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At next, we will move on to Diane, followed by Rachel Doughty, or Doty.
Hi, am I on now?
Yes, you're on.
Sorry about that. I'd like to welcome the new superintendent. Very excited that you're here. I'd also kind of like to paraphrase the new superintendent a little bit. While I'm speaking out about Virtual Academy, my daughter has been in Virtual Academy, and Ms. Blackman's an amazing teacher, and my daughter has just, she loves school, and she's doing so great. She's completely excelled. And to end this program, I think would show the world that we actually have a lack of value for each and every child. Because this program really does show that a village should be strong and deep. But without it, it won't be for these children. This program also shows other children the importance of supporting and respecting everyone. So please keep Virtual Academy. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Rachel, sorry, Doty, followed by Jonas LaMaterie-Brownell.
I apologize. It took a second to promote me. I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader at BSD and Green Team representative from Sylvia Mendez School. And I wanted to very briefly highlight for you things that went on during the pandemic. We worked very hard to get community support from NGOs to address single-use products in the, in food service in the schools with great success. So thank you. You all appropriated $10,000 toward moving along on that pilot project. However, it looks like the school will not be able to do that pilot project to get single use out of food service because for very many months, it has been impossible to hire a dishwasher. And I understand that food service in general is very much suffering from hiring problems that appears to be an issue with the hiring process. So I would ask that you consider that because food service did an excellent job during the pandemic, meeting the needs of families, and now they're bowing under that weight, and it's prohibiting them from achieving their goals, including zero-waste goals. And we may lose, sorry, one last thing is we got the $10,000 met by NGOs for the dishes, and we may lose that now. So if the $10,000 could be moved over to staff, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry. It's okay. Thank you as well. Next, we will have Jonas LaMaterie-Brownell, followed by Rianda Batiste.
I'd like to cede my time to Yvette Falarka.
Ms. Falarka, if you could please raise your hand, and we will be able to promote you as a panelist. Oh, I'm, you know what? I'm so sorry. Ms. Falarka already had an opportunity to speak and ceded her time to someone else. So technically, I apologize for that, but technically, we are not able to cede time to someone who has already had the opportunity to be a speaker and ceded their time to someone else. So I apologize for that confusion. Next, we will go to Rianda Batiste, followed by Ariel Danielle.
So, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rianda Batiste, and I am from SFUSD. I am a member of the African-American Parent Advisory Council. And I was calling in just to welcome Mrs. Anika Ford-Mortell to the BUSD and to tell you guys that you are getting a total and complete gem. Nikki has been a major blessing to me and my family, and you can tell, I affectionately call her Nikki, and to my baby, she is Auntie Nikki. She is the most loving and loyal administrator that you all will find, and she is gonna be truly a blessing to BUSD. While I am very, very sad for SFUSD, I know that Nikki is going to do amazing things, and I cannot wait to see how she performs on this next stage of the journey. Congrats, Nikki. We love you.
Thank you, Rianda. Next, we will have Ariel Danielle, followed by Dinah Macy.
Hi, my name is Ariel Danielle. I'm a fifth grader. Back in September, I did not want to go to in-person class because I did not feel safe, and I was scared of catching COVID. And I was, and I would bring it home and give it to my grandparents. I still feel that way. I am proud of my teacher, Mr. Stevens, and of the school board because you guys decided to work together to keep me and my family safe from COVID. At least I am doing better in school and more confident than I ever have. Please keep the option for virtual learning next school year so the kids can feel safe and protected like I have been.
Thank you so much, Ariel. I'm so sorry that we didn't give you an opportunity to speak first before the public commenter. So remember next time to put student or S by your name so that we will give you priority, so that we could give you priority. But thank you so much for being here. Next, we will have Dinah Macy, followed by Grideva Kuzen.
Hi, it's my turn.
Yes, it is. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Dinah Macy. I've been here before. I'm a virtual K5 assisted homeschool teacher and with BIS, and I'm here to continue my advocacy for virtual learning next school year. As we know, COVID is here to stay, and families enrolled in virtual programs need to remain virtual due to various reasons, but a lot of them are because vulnerable students and household members. Virtual Academy has been a lifeline to these families. Virtual homeschool families commit to being their child's primary teacher and meet with the USD educators weekly for assessments and curriculum guidance. Comparatively, Virtual Academy, in Virtual Academy, teachers are the primary educators. Dedicated virtual teachers have developed a unique skill set and it would be damaging to let virtual learning go. Please retain Virtual Academy and virtual teachers for next school year and make this decision now, as students, families, and teachers are relying on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dinah. Next, we will have Grideva Kuzen, followed by Jonas LaMaterie-Brownell, and our last comment for the evening will be by Jessica.
Hi, this is Grideva. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now, Grideva.
Sorry about that. So I wanted to join others who have spoken in support of the Virtual Academy, the virtual teaching program that BUSD has been offering. I'm a BUSD parent. I also am the parent of a college student who is currently battling COVID at home. It's, it's, it's really rough, and I really wouldn't wish this on any family. But we're lucky that we don't have a vulnerable family member, a senior or a young child younger than five living in the household. I have a tool set up that tracks the dashboard that shows cases in BUSD, and every, almost every day, I see quite a few cases at quite a few schools throughout the district. And I just think about how incredibly hard it would be to have a student in those schools while having vulnerable family members at home. So I thank you for what you've offered so far, and I really hope you'll continue to support it and support our families. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Jonas LaMaterie-Brownell, followed by our last speaker, which is Jessica.
Thank you.
Jonas, welcome back. Sorry about the confusion a few seconds ago with the ceding of time, but we're happy, we're happy to receive your remarks now.
Oh, I appreciate it. Good evening, Jonas LaMaterie-Brownell, the USD's Herak Hospital teacher. Fortune.com recently covered a study showing that if we continue the way we're going, in a few years, 1 billion people of all ages may have long COVID. Remember, stop the spread. Fully vaxxed can spread COVID. Preserve the Virtual Academy and the virtual teachers in assisted homeschool. Don't disregard these families. You've heard from them, the students, the teachers, who are all ready to carry forward these models in BUSD of excellence and equity in public education. And listen, please, everyone, to Yannir Bar Yam, to Deep D Girdasani, to Eric Feigelding. May we understand that we can end this pandemic. We have the tools, and we have the know-how. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And our last public commenter for this evening was already identified as Jessica, as the person who was listed before her, is no, listed after her is no longer here. And that was the person who was identified when we opened up our public comment period. So if you could please promote Jessica, we will receive her comments at this time.
Jessica, you can begin your comment.
Hi, Jessica, welcome. Jessica, I see that you're unmuted, but unfortunately, we can't hear your sound.
Okay, let's give it a go.
Thank you and good evening. I'm here to add another voice in support to keep the Virtual Academy, to keep the virtual teachers, and to request that you listen to the voices of the students and the teachers who have spoken tonight and spoken many other, at many of the other meetings. Their, their stories are so important. And again, the benefits are so great. And I ask you to please, please consider keeping this and maybe funding it more. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At this time, we will now move on to union comments. Are there any union comments prepared?
President Brown, I do have a BFT union video to share whenever you're ready.
I'm ready to receive it at this time. Thank you.
Superintendent Stevens in the Berkeley Unified School Board. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Today, you will receive a presentation describing proposed new funding priorities. I would like to spend some time digging deeper into some of these items. We can all agree that there are ever-increasing needs to make sure we are serving our students best. We also know that our schools are underfunded. For these reasons and many more, we need to make sure that we are spending our available dollars wisely. One place we need to constantly carefully scrutinize is the district's use of private consultants and contractors. We should not be spending public dollars on private services if we can be providing these services at a higher quality, a lower cost, with more accountability in accordance with the law. The law strictly limits when we can use contractors, and there may be possible legal ramifications if some of these proposals are approved. BFT has major concerns about how a $520,000 contract was awarded last year in its proposed extension. With no process, and to the surprise of many, RT Fisher was given over a half a million dollar contract at the last board meeting of the year, with no prior conversation or input. There is no question that we need to focus on our students that are not being served well currently. But BFT does question how this contract was awarded and what we have seen for our education dollars. The contract itself has no measurable outcomes, does not specify what the individual costs are, and from the outside, looks like a blank check. More importantly, much of this money was spent on direct services, community engagement, or data presentations that could have been provided by our own staff for a fraction of the cost. Now that this contract is up for renewal, we need to look at it more closely. This contract was funded on one-time dollars last year, but the proposal is for it to be on ongoing dollars now. If a service is ongoing, BUSD should figure out a way to provide the services with our own employees. Much of this work falls within job classifications that already exist in our district. I will give some examples. The STEM steps portion of the RT Fisher contract costs $55,000 this school year. It served 174 students who met for two and a half hours per month. We're still waiting on attendance data to see how often those students participated. The 2022 summer program, which could be done by BCC or BFT members, is costing $166,000 for 125 students for three hours a day over the summer. This summer program overlaps with the STEM program we are already offering in the district taught by credentialed teachers. Assuming full capacity, the cost per student of STEM steps is $1,328 for the summer program. The BUSD cost for a similar summer STEM program, which serves 150 unduplicated students, costs the district $400 a student, and BUSD has been able to write grants to cover any other costs. Our students deserve credentialed CTE teachers over the summer. Another contract that we are questioning is the LCAP consultant. Historically, this work was the responsibility of the Director of Special Projects. We're not sure what the $50,000 contract pays for, especially considering that one of the committees did not even meet this year. I believe we are still asking the same question. How do we know that a given expenditure in LCAP is effective? $50,000 later, I'm not sure we are any closer to resolving that question. What was meant to be an emergency stopgap measure because of staffing issues now seems to be a permanent solution. This is not a sustainable cost. These dollars should be going towards student services. Another contract that we have concerned about is the college-bound contract. This work overlaps with the work of our college counselors at Berkeley High School. For $125,000, up to 130 scholars could have been served. Instead, 80 students were served with no reduction in what BUSD paid this company. This is 62% of the total amount of students that could have been served, and BUSD is paying for the full contract. According to our counselors, recommended students were turned away. We are also questioning a monthly model of service delivery at $1,500 per student served. For the same price, we could hire a full-time college counselor who could take on many more students and work with students every single day instead of once per month. As a district, we need to make sure that we do not outsource work that we can be doing for cheaper, in-house, and with accountability. In fact, the California Education Code speaks to this. Ed. Code 45103.1 says that contractors should only be used when there is cost savings or emergencies for classified employees. Some of this work is classified. On the certificated side, Ed. Code 44830 says, "The governing board of a school district shall employ for positions requiring certification qualifications only persons who possess the qualifications for those positions prescribed by law." We agree that affinity-based programming is effective. We have a track record of providing affinity-based programs using our own employees. The Longfellow Emoja Program and the African American Studies Department at Berkeley High are two examples of this. We cannot privatize these services. We should develop these programs and staff them. It is in the public interest, in order to serve our students, to hire staff who are on our campuses, participate in our professional development, see our students every day, and have relationships with school sites, and that are also accountable to our employer.
Are there any committee comments at this time?
I believe there is. Let me see. Sandra Loving was in the audience.
Oh, beautiful.
Sandra, are you, if you have comments from the PAC, can you virtually raise your hand? There it is.
Thank you.
Hi, Sandra. You're, you're on.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sandra. Welcome.
Thank you. So these are some PAC comments that we collaborate with, that I wanted to share with you. So good evening, everybody. The PAC supports the majority of budget reduction recommendations as presented by BUSD leadership. However, we have three areas of concern as detailed below. Bus drivers, line 11 and reductions. The PAC is concerned that freezing two and reducing two other bus driver positions could impact students in many ways. First, upcoming possibility of legislation forcing districts to provide transport for K-12, and we won't have staff in place to make it a reality. BUSD currently is hiring at a very slow process. Buses are the safest way to school, and we should advocate for a lower mileage radius to qualify, especially schools that sit on some of the most fatal streets in Berkeley, as per the Vision Zero Plan. We need to prioritize transportation for kids to outside after-school programs because learns cannot enroll all who are in need. Availability for field trips, which should come back in full swing next year, we hope. And then changes to the middle school enrollment plan may require additional transportation support, and we must plan ahead for that potential. We understand that the actual recommendation is to add more FTE to the drivers we already have in place. But it is unknown if it will make kids have longer bus rides to school and back. We also understand that current bus drivers and their union are on board with the current reduction plans, but continue to have concerns about unintended consequences of the freeze slash reduction. So our next concern is the Virtual Distance Academy, which is line 14 in the reductions. We empathize with the current virtual learners who are advocating to keep the distance learning option as is for the next academic year. And would like to make sure that BUSD district leadership and the Board of Education understand the full ramifications of removing the program as COVID waves continue to affect our community. Are we doing a disservice to some of our most vulnerable families? Can the K-8 independent learning option be made comparable? Is distance learning an adequate education for our youngest learners? Goal number one, which is high-quality instruction. Do students have access to timely intervention, which is goal number two? Do we have to take Virtual Academy away in order to have a balanced budget? Or can we maintain the program for another year? Does keeping the program remove the possibility for support we could have put in place to address learning loss and social-emotional learning in a more direct way for more students? Fiduciarily, we understand that board members have requested cost comparisons versus the cost of educating students in person, and understand that the cost, the $12,580 per student, may be equivalent to what the state provides per student, which is $14,174 in 2018, 2019, which is the latest data we have access to. Our last concern is mental health, line 29 in the priorities. It was worrisome to learn that $500,000 reserved for mental health went unspent this past academic year. More than one school site has expressed that continuing mental health support isn't important for our recovery from the pandemic. The excuse cannot be that there was no one to hire. This year, our students are having social-emotional crisis like no other. Classroom management techniques that worked before don't anymore. Students and families are under external pressures that follow them to school sometimes. We must roll over this half a million dollars into the same category of mental health supports and start thinking of innovative solutions to support teachers and students in building better welcoming schools. Goal number three, beyond traditional crisis mode counseling model. Thank you for my time, and this is on behalf of the PAC.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Sandra, on behalf of the PAC. We appreciate having you here and we appreciate your comments. And next, we will move to Board Director comments. We will begin our Board Director comments section with Student Director, Ms. Mascherini Swan.
Can you come back to me?
Yes, of course. We'll go to Director Alper.
Thank you, President Brown. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I think that our new superintendent, our incoming superintendent may have left us, but I wanted to welcome her and say how excited I was to have her join the district. She, we were blown away during the interview process. And I know my colleagues who went on the site visit heard only rave reviews, and that's what we got from all of her references and people who know her from San Francisco, including Dr. Stevens, who worked with her in San Francisco. And I think we're very fortunate to have her. And, and for me, it's, it's, it's only bittersweet because, because Dr. Stevens is leaving us. And I, and I want to echo new Superintendent Ford-Morthos. Thanks to him for, for putting us in a position where we can now move, you know, move forward with, with even, you know, even greater strides towards our mission. And you, and we'll, I'm sure, say more when it's your actual last meeting, Dr. Stevens. But it's an opportunity, I think, to thank you again for your leadership over the past few years and for stewarding the district during this incredibly difficult time. And I also want to thank and appreciate, and where is he? He might, he's off-screen, but Associate Superintendent Aurelio, who, there he is. Did, I know it's publicly announced. I don't know if anyone said anything yet about that, that Aurelio is leaving us for the superintendency of St. Helena. Congratulations. We, we only got to work with you for a little bit, but, but appreciate so much your dedication to the district. And we're going to miss you and, and look forward to working with you for the next month or two until you take off on the next exciting journey in your career. I wanted to, the only other thing I wanted to say, President Brown, is just a quick word about COVID. That I know that there's, there's some, there's rising cases in the community across the country and in our community, and that, and there, I gather that there might be some questions about whether we should be reinstating some of the protections that we've lifted. And I just wanted to make the comment during this period because it's not on our agenda that I personally continue to think we should follow the directives of our local and state public health officials. I think we should require what those experts require us to impose and that we should not substitute our judgment for theirs. It's not our area of expertise. That's, it's theirs. And if there is guidance from city public health officials that asks the district to use our judgment, again, in my opinion, judgment that's beyond our expertise. I guess I would request that of you, President Brown and Dr. Stevens, that we invite those officials, that we invite Dr. Hernandez to come to our next public meeting so that we can have a conversation with her, a dialogue with her, and ask her directly about what she recommends in her expertise and why. So I wanted to just make that request during my comment time and turn it back over to you, President Brown. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Director Alper. And next, we will go to Vice President Babid, if you're ready.
I'm not ready.
Okay. And Director Vasudev, are you ready?
I'm ready. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for your thoughtful comments this evening. I especially just want to thank the families that came to share their experiences with Virtual Academy. And I just really appreciate you sharing your personal stories with us. And I also wanted to thank the PAC for your comments as well as our labor partners. Thank you so much. Tonight, there are several things I'm looking forward to discussing. I'd like to thank our new incoming superintendent, Anika Ford-Morthell, for attending the beginning of the meeting. And I'm looking forward to working with her on ways to continue supporting our various affinity groups in BUSD and to make sure that we're living up to our mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. I had the pleasure of attending the validation visit that, you know, Director Alper referenced and enjoyed meeting Superintendent Morthos, colleagues at SFUSD who all raved about her student-centered leadership, her collaborative nature with staff at all levels, her strong commitment to data-driven decision-making in benefit of all students. It was just a wonderful day to be in SFUSD, which is a district that's near and dear to my heart as a graduate of SFUSD Middle Schools. And I'm thrilled, but before I move on, I just also want to echo the appreciation for Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I'm so sad that we only worked together for a year, but you're going somewhere wonderful. Expect some visits to wine country. We'll miss you. And to our superintendent, Brent Stevens, who I have enjoyed working very closely with on COVID-19 mitigation and just really appreciate your leadership during one of the most difficult times to serve as a superintendent. So I really appreciate you both and echo what some of the comments from the community that you'll be missed. And I know that our bilingual and multilingual families will especially miss you. And I'm thrilled today for our discussion on the Latinx resolution. I'm going to save my substantive comments for later in the evening. But just want to say that it was less than a year ago that I got to work with community groups like Latinos and Niels at Berkeley to pass this resolution. And although I know there's more work to be done, I'm just so grateful to our staff for implementing programs in the middle of a pandemic in support for the achievement and success of all Latinx students in Berkeley Unified School District. So I know that some staff may leave early, but I know that you're all part of, you know, trying something new, and I appreciate you all. I also wanted, you know, we're entering graduation season, and I'm so excited to be going to the student graduation soon. I know that, that my colleagues and I really enjoy being able to watch students graduate. And I had the pleasure of attending a graduation ceremony, a very special graduation ceremony last week. I want to congratulate the 30 Berkeley High parents. We, you know, we don't talk about parent graduations, but we had a parent graduation last week. We had 30 parents graduating from the PICA program. That's the Parent Institute for Quality Education. These are monolingual, Spanish-speaking parents. So I was able to attend the ceremony, meet those 30 wonderful Berkeley High parents who are committing to supporting their children with college preparation. And it was a wonderful ceremony. I got to meet a lot of the monolingual speaking parents. Many of them reminded me of my own parents and their journey as immigrants in this country trying to learn the American school STEM. It was really wonderful. I actually cried. It was very, a very emotional graduation. But I also wanted to give a shout out to Director Stupin and to Letthea Meskwa at Berkeley High, who is going to, you know, after the parents are done with this program, you know, they really want to plug in more with our schools, with our, you know, with getting to know the staff at Berkeley High. So there's going to be a tour for the parents, an onsite tour of the high school that I'm going to accompany the young, accompany the parents on. And just really appreciate Ms. Meskwa's leadership and support with the PICA graduation and that parent cohort. I also want to invite our community to attend tomorrow our wonderful Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrations at 6:00 PM. The celebrations are entitled "Hear Us Roar: Celebrating AAPI Literary Voices in the Year of the Tiger." I want to give a shout out to the staff, parents, and community leaders, our BUSD AAPI parent group, who have worked really hard to put this wonderful celebration together. I hope you can attend. It's our second annual AAPI Heritage Month celebration. And I also wanted to give a shout out to my colleagues on City Council. Last week, on May 10th, I was able to attend the council meeting to give public support for the Hopkins Street Protected Bike Lanes and pedestrian safety improvements that are going to make our commute to King, our students' commute to King, much safer. And I know that that's a very bikeable school. There's a lot of students and... much safer. And I know that that's a very bikeable school. There's a lot of students and, and staff that bike to and from school, the King Community every day. I don't know anyone has ever seen the bike racks at King, but it's really impressive to see how students are locking their bikes everywhere near the school. And so I'm thrilled that the commute is going to be a lot safer and wanted to just thank our, our city council colleagues for making that happen. And I also just quickly wanted to note from my colleagues and for people that are here that I'm actually traveling right now to attend a public health conference and speak about COVID-19 mitigation in California schools. So I'll have to excuse myself after Agenda Item thirteen point two. So I just wanted everyone to know I'm going to be leaving the meeting tonight a little bit early to, to travel. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Director Sinai, are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you, President Brown. I also want to thank everybody for coming. I am, as I said earlier, thoroughly excited about the appointment of Dr. Ford Morthel as our incoming superintendent. And I welcome her to our district. I think you've heard from a lot of my colleagues about some of the attributes that she'll bring. And I, you know, I do also want to echo the appreciation and the congratulations to both Associate Superintendent Aurelio and, and Dr. Stevens for your journey and your next steps, and thank you for all the work that you've done. And I want to just take a second to thank our, our cabinet and our members of our leadership team in BUSD that have really, you know, kept the, kept the ship going forward, kept us floating and, and moving at, at the pace that we need to make and dealing with a lot of transition and a lot of unknowns. And I have confidence that the incoming superintendent will work hard to build on the strength of our cabinet while working to fill critical positions. I know that, you know, people get worried when there's transition, and I think the strength of our board and the strength of our cabinet will help make sure that we have smooth transitions. So we'll continue to work together to make sure that, that that happens. I appreciate Director Alper's comments about following the direction of our public health officers. COVID is not behind us. COVID is not over. I'm empathetic to the families who came tonight to talk about Virtual Academy because the threat to many families are real. Fortunately, we have vaccines. Fortunately, we have more and more boosters. Fortunately, we have antivirals. So fortunately, the impact, while still extreme in many ways, is not like it was a year ago. That said, public health officers are highly recommending that people mask indoors given the surge or the swell of the, of the pandemic right now. And so I really want to urge our families, our teachers, our staff to mask up. It's not a requirement. Strongly recommended for everybody's safety. I understand why families with members who are vulnerable to COVID-19 are asking for the continuation of Virtual Academy. A number of us have asked the superintendent to provide us data on how many students are enrolled and are looking to be enrolled in the coming year. Their reasons for enrollment. And I also understand the challenge of funding this program when you've got to have teachers for the appropriate grade levels regardless of whether you have two students in that class or twenty students in that class. And, you know, I think as we take this into consideration with the budget, I will take all of what I'm hearing and experiencing and the data into consideration as we think about our budget recommendations for the coming year. I really want to thank the Parent Advisory Committee, the PAC, for adding all the extra meetings they have in the past few months to thoughtfully deliberate our district's budget. We heard from Ms. Loving today. They came forward with their recommendations around budget cuts. When they come in for the June first meeting, when we're going to look at the budget for the first action, they will have more recommendations around additional funding. And without their commitment and the commitment of the DLAC and the commitment of BSEP and all of the parents and volunteers that are active in our budget process, we would not have the robust dialogue and information that we need to make informed decisions. So I really want to thank all of the parents for their involvement. Two more things. On Sunday, I held my open office hours at James Kenny Park, gorgeous day. And I really want to extend my appreciation to the parents who came out, taking time out of their precious day with their family to share their concerns. Most of the conversations that I've had with folks was around Measure G and the funds around the Berkeley High parking lot and the relocation of plant operations. I also have spoken with Dr. Stevens and with Executive, Executive Director Kalise to really look and review of the background information that led to our decision-making process for the plant operations. And I look forward to the upcoming Facility Subcommittee on June second. We also talked about HVAC systems at some of our schools, particularly where they have antiquated HVAC systems and the changing environment over the last four years due to climate change. Fires existed when we developed the budget for the bond, but obviously, climate change has, and fires have gotten more extreme along with COVID-19. So I look forward to using the resources that we've spent money on in the last year with our MIR fourteen filters and our sensors to better understand how our air quality is being monitored in our schools and what we need to do to continue to improve. And then lastly, I'm super excited about this weekend because we will be having the first ever Community Block Party for Berkeley's educators on Saturday, twelve to three downtown on Center Street in Shattuck, hosted by the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. Join us. There'll be music, food, kids' activities and a mural unveiling. It'll be very exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. I'll go next and give Miss, Director Student Director Mascariña Swan and Vice President Babbitt a little bit more time, but thank you all so much for coming out this evening. Thank you for all of the public comments that were made, as well as our committee comments and union comments that were received this evening. I already expressed my excitement and appreciation for the appointment of our new superintendent, Anika Ford Morthel. But I did want to take this moment to thank our community again for your input, but also for entrusting us in the validation visit process. And that was myself, Vice President Babbitt, as well as Director Vasudev, who had the opportunity to go over to San Francisco. And I also want to thank our union partners who had access to doing their own validating as well. So thank you all for your attention to that and thank you for your support in that process. We have a lot of wonderful celebrations coming up around the district. So many incredible graduations. If I were to call all of those out, it would take us a little bit of time. So I will just do this and I will call out some of the exciting celebrations that will happen over the weekend up to early next week. And then when I see you all again on June first, I'll do another round of graduation and celebration shout-outs. So as Director Sinai mentioned, we do have an amazing block party coming up this weekend that I'm really excited about and I hope to see all of your faces there. Please remember to mask up and to be safe. In addition to that, tomorrow, Bridge is celebrating, having their graduation celebration held in, I believe, the Berkeley High School Library. So please come out and show your support for our Bridge Scholars. In addition to that, the Celebration of Black Excellence will also take place on the twenty-first at King Middle School. Cass's graduation will take place on the twenty-third. Ahaz's graduation will take place on the twenty-fourth, along with Senior Night and the Berkeley High School International Graduation, International High School Graduation on the twenty-sixth and the Academy of Medicine and Public Service Amps, as well as the tour, as well on the twenty-sixth. The Multilingual Learner Program, graduation on the twenty-seven and the AAPI Learner Program on the twenty-eighth. And because we will get the opportunity to highlight it on the first, we want to make sure that we highlight it right now, which will be the Latinx graduation, which will be held in the Little Theater. In addition to that, Longfellow Middle School will have their Black Graduation on Monday, the twenty-third, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the speaker for that graduation. So please come on out. That will be held in person at Longfellow Middle School. So those are all of the exciting things that are happening in our district as we celebrate, uplift and affirm our phenomenal scholars and our graduates across our schools here in Berkeley. Please be sure to continue to check the website as those will be highlighted on the website for your viewing pleasure later on. I do not have any other comments other than I am really excited to receive the Latinx presentation this evening, as well as the additional action items that will come up from our Director of VSEP, which will be Kathy Fleming in a little, in a little while. I will now go back to Student Director Mascariña Swan for your comments, followed by Vice President Babbitt. Oh, sorry. Can I say one last thing? I also have to, of course, join my colleagues in saying appreciation and thanking Superintendent Stevens, as well as Associate Superintendent Aurelio. We will have a more formal opportunity to thank you all for the work that you've done here in BUSD and to congratulate you and celebrate you on this next journey in education. And we know that we are going to put a comma instead of a period because we know that your partnership and your friendship here in BUSD will be everlasting. So congratulations to the two of you all on this next journey. All right, Ms. Mascariña Swan, it is now your turn. Oh, wait, wait, one more thing, Ms. Mascariña Swan. Sorry. This is probably your news to share, but I'm going to share it anyway. I want to take this opportunity to invite everyone to please come back to our board meeting, which will be on June first because we will have our student director, I mean, not only will there be important information for all of us to learn, but we will have our student director, Director Mascariña Swan presiding over that meeting. So now get ready to preside. Get ready for practice, Mascariña Swan.
Okay, we can talk more about that. It's finals week too. It's just a lot. But I would love to. I'll keep my comments very brief. I'd just like to thank all of the speakers who came out tonight. There was a lot of them and especially all the students who came and spoke. Especially from our younger grades, it's always really lovely to see. And I'd also like to voice my excitement to hear, we'll just hear more about the Latinx resolution later tonight. And it was lovely to be introduced to the future superintendent finalist, Dr. Ford Morthel. And I'm just very excited for this new turning point for our district with a new superintendent and really hopeful for what's to come next year. I'm also really looking forward to introduce you all to my successor Ian, who I am hopeful will be able to come to the next meeting as well. It's another reason for you all to come. And yeah, I'm just very excited about all the amazing, like, things ending this year and celebrations for that, and also all the big changes that are happening next year. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Student Director Mascariña Swan, you scared me there for a second. I had to go back through our messages and make sure you said yes. So yes, enthusiastically, and we will get you prepared. It will be great and it'll be easy. Okay. Vice President Babbitt, it is now your turn.
Thank you so much. I also want to, in interest of time, not do too many echoing of my board colleagues' wonderful comments, but I do hope to see you all on Center Street in Shattuck from twelve to three this Saturday for the Community Block Party in which we will be celebrating our educators who definitely deserve to be celebrated for all of the hard work. Going to SFUSD, doing the walkthroughs, just reminded me of how passionate our educators are and how much they really do pour into our students. And so I am looking forward to celebrating you all and being in person with so many of you. We've been on the board for almost two years now and it's been on Zoom. So I can touch you on Saturday if you come out. I'll be, I'll have my mask on though. And I also want to congratulate Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I am so honored that you were selected because I do feel like we've been a part of that, your testing grounds here in BUSD. And so I look forward to hearing all of the great things that are going to come to St. Helena under your leadership. And definitely excited to welcome Ms. Ford Morthel to BUSD. Lastly, I just want to respond to the BFT's union comments because I did invite you a couple of times to have a candid discussion about the African-American Success Framework. It is a little offensive that out of all the contracting arrangements that we've done in BUSD, that not only did you not take the time to, to meet with me to discuss it, that you called out those specific for African-American students. And if you look at our data, it definitely says that we need to be spending monies in these ways. So I welcome you again to a candid conversation where we can dive deep into the data and hopefully we can turn this around and create a better partnership so that we can actually close this longstanding opportunity gap that primarily rests on the shoulders of all of us actually working together. So, and again, thank you to all of the staff for all of your hard work as we move through this budget season. So looking forward to the Latinx resolution. I think it's already slated that we'll be getting updates quarterly. So I'm glad that we are on target to, to really focus on this initiative and looking forward to hearing what staff is going to present for BSEP and everything else tonight. So stay tuned and hang in there with us, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Superintendent Stevens.
Thank you so much, President Brown. I too just want to offer my warm congratulations to incoming Superintendent Anika Ford Morthel. I have had the chance to follow Nikki's career over better than a decade. I actually first met her back in Hayward, where we were both principals. I had a chance to visit one of the schools she led in Oakland when I was working in San Francisco, and then we were colleagues in SFUSD for many years. I know her to be an educator and leader of high integrity. And I know that the Berkeley community is going to benefit a huge amount from her leadership and from her enthusiasm. So welcome to you. And please know that you can count on my full support as, as we both go through these transitions. I also want to offer my warm congratulations to my friend and colleague Ruben Aurelio on his appointment as the superintendent in St. Helena. That becomes official tomorrow night, but congratulations in advance to you on that remarkable accomplishment and for all of your hard work over the last year. It's been an interesting ride together and you've made it much, much better. I also want to echo comments by board members about the importance of staying the course with respect to COVID mitigations. We have about two and a half weeks left in our school year. We have lots of fun things to look forward to, including many convenings, both with family members and students. And so we'll all keep in mind that masks continue to be strongly recommended at all of our events, including indoor instruction. We will continue to make available a wide variety of testing resources to students and family members. That includes site-based testing, the distribution of at-home test kits, including at-home kits for seniors prior to attending graduation events, as well as our standing BAS testing clinic. That's at the Berkeley Adult School and is available to BUSD students free of charge, five days per week. And then finally, my thanks to the city of Berkeley and particularly to Trish McDermott, our senior communications officer, for your work to be able to continue to stand up small vaccination clinics in order to continue to offer either first, second or, or first or second vaccines to our students. I encourage you tomorrow night to log on to Zoom to check out the Hear Us Roar. This will be a virtual celebration of AAPI Heritage Month. This particular event called Hear Us Roar, Celebrating AAPI Literary Voices in the Year of the Tiger is the sort of culmination of lots of partnership over the course of the year with a particular group called AAPI Organizers, as well as multiple staff members. It promises to be a fun and inspiring evening. So please join us. In the coming two weeks, we also have two important town halls taking place on subjects that are important to the Berkeley community. This includes a town hall to share updated versions of the middle school student assignment, as well as cost projections. That will take place on May twenty-fifth in the evening, and that's in anticipation of a discussion to take place with the Board of Education on, at the June first board meeting. On May thirty-first, we're also eager to host the community in a town hall to learn more about the final draft of the African-American Success Framework. This has been a longstanding project, a passion project for many of us to bring to fruition a framework that will cast a vision for the district in the coming years about the sort of coordinated set of supports required to boost achievement for African-American students here in the district. So please join us on May thirty-first from six to eight for a virtual town hall. And then this evening, as a final note, we will be sort of touching on the governor's May budget revision to public schools here in California. Overall, this is good news for public education. We will be presenting a variety of options for reducing spending from the general fund. We continue to think that these reductions are important. Many of them represent efficiencies to the way we do business. But realizing savings is also important as we look ahead and navigate a scenario in which there's constantly rising costs, in which we're still contending with reduced student enrollment. And we still are despite this good news at a sort of a moment where we must think cautiously and carefully about our spending as we go into the future. So all of tonight's discussion is anticipation of a board action to take place on June first. That is when we will be asking the board for formal action. But I wanted to lay out in advance of But I wanted to lay out in advance of tonight's presentation, this sort of next six weeks or so of budgeting discussion. So with that, President Brown, I'm going to turn it back to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to offer those comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens. Next, we will go to approval of the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
A second.
Secuted by Director Vasudev. Ms. Matios, can you please call the roll?
I can. Student Muscatini Swan?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Apologies for that.
Thank you so much. We will move to our first discussion item tonight, and a lot of folks who are here for their comment, mentioned comments about their excitement about this presentation. I also share in that excitement, as well as my board directors share in that excitement. And so you know, this evening, the school board and our overall community here in BUSD will hear an update regarding the actions named in the Latinx Resolution that was adopted by the school board in June of 2021. And I'm just gonna pause here and thank Director Vasudev for bringing this resolution forward to the Board of Education, as it calls out a lot of things that are necessary and supports our Latinx community. So members of the Educational Services Team will provide a review tonight of the data from the school year 2021 to 2022, and also discuss the progress that were made on the specific actions that were named in the Latinx Resolution. As well, the Educational Services Team will provide background and context to this year's work, as well as recommendations for the upcoming year. So I'm happy to introduce and bring up Associate Superintendent Aurelio, as well as Liza Stupin, and a couple, I'm gonna let you call everyone who's supposed to be a part of that.
Thank you, President Brown.
Because I don't want to mess it up, Associate Superintendent, but I'll turn it over to you right now and share our excitement, and thanks for your staff who will be giving us this presentation this evening.
Thank you, President Brown. And before we begin, and I share my screen, I want to do a little housekeeping, because this evening, we have the pleasure of offering real-time Spanish translation during our presentation. That is our first for our board meeting, so you'll have to bear with us as we work through the technology. So I have a little just preamble I want to read, and I'm gonna read it both in English and Spanish. That way we show our community how to access the translation. So, good evening to our Berkeley community. Tonight, we are presenting this Latinx Resolution update in both English and Spanish to access the interpretation feature. In Zoom, you're gonna click on the globe icon at the bottom of your screen, and you will select a language channel, either English or Spanish. Buenas noches en nuestra comunidad de Berkeley. En esta noche presentamos esta categulación de resolución Latinx con interpretación en tiempo real. Para acceder a la función de interpretación en Zoom, haga clic en el icono del globo y elige su lenguaje en español. I'm gonna give the audience an opportunity to select their language, and then for you all who don't speak Spanish, you just leave your Zoom alone, or you can select the English channel, and you'll just hear the main audio feed. For those in Spanish, you will hear the Spanish translation. So with that, I will share my screen. So this evening, we are bringing an update to the Latinx Resolution, which was adopted last June. So this resolution is not quite a year old at this point, so we're very excited to be bringing you all an update. Joining me this evening is Director Lisa Stupin and Director Ruth Steele, who will be enjoying helping me with this presentation. Just as a reminder, the Latinx Resolution was adopted last June. In our district, we have 22% of our student population identifying as Latino, Latina, or Latinx. So just a couple items we are going to be covering this evening. We will be going through a number of the resolution clauses, the wherestes, or the action items, and providing some updates. There's going to be a lot of text on this slide deck. We will not be reading those to you. Some of the language you see are lifted directly from the resolution. And we did our very best to make sure that most texts that you will see will have both English and Spanish translation on screen. We did that purposely, because part of the resolution does call for us to present this information to our community in both languages. And so this first slide here just really names the data sets that we will be examining this evening, which is part of the resolution that calls for us to really truly examine our academic and social emotional data related to the performance of our Latinx students. So I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa Stupin, and she's going to talk about the community engagement efforts, a number of different items that we've introduced and implemented this year. And I will say before we jump in, I want to applaud the efforts of this district to take on this challenge during a pandemic. That's, you know, we keep forgetting this, but we're doing all of this work during a pandemic, and it was a Herculean effort to make sure these different programs are given attention. And with relative different successes, we will speak to those. But for year one, I am very proud of the work that the teams have done to accomplish this. So Lisa, do you want to continue?
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having us here for this presentation tonight. And I am extremely happy to be back in full swing right now. So with that being said, one of the key components of this resolution includes efforts to increase our parent and community engagement with our Latinx families and caregivers. To that end, you can see on this slide, the programs, initiatives, and opportunities we implemented or are in the process of implementing to increase the level of engagement. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is Project to Inspire, or PTI. So this is driven, this is a parent-driven program that's brought to us also by CAVE, or the California Association for Bilingual Educators, in conjunction with the work that we're doing with the Multilingual Master Plan. And so this program can support up to 40, 40.
Lisa, we lost your audio. Are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry, what did I end up?
Something about this supported 40 participants.
Oh, got it. Okay, so this program can support up to 40 participants. And outreach was conducted via Infinite Campus emails, also snail mail, and personal phone calls. And so at the last recent check, we had 38 families registered. And so we still continuously provide outreach, and our OFI staff has been amazing to call the families and to remind them of the sessions upcoming in the week. So for PTI, they meet once a week as much as possible, and they cover content such as social emotional learning, the English learner roadmap, and empowering the community through multilingualism and multiculturalism, and it's shared by the family. So the presentation is given, and then the discussion is brought on by the family, and that's how those sessions are ran. The next thing I want to talk about is PK, or the Parent Institute for Quality Education. This year, we were able to partner with PK and completed four cohorts that consisted of 143 participants. Each cohort met over eight weeks and concluded with a PK graduation honoring the participants for their time. Currently, we're working with PK Partners on a plan for the next year. Ruben, did you want to say something?
We're gonna have to slow down our pace a bit, because I think Isabel is struggling to keep up. So let's try to be mindful of that. Sorry, Isabel.
Sorry, Isabel. Okay, so the next thing I'm gonna talk about is Latino family literacy. So currently, curriculum was purchased this year in addition to PD for seven school sites. We were scheduled to start this year, but at the request of our school sites, due to the pandemic and everything going on, it was requested that we implement this program in the upcoming school year, so 2223. So in the fall, our plan is to solicit sites for interest and for PD to begin in September and October of this upcoming academic year. And then once PD is implemented, the program can then be rolled out to our BUSD families to participate. And then the next program that I want to talk about is Puente. So the district, Longfellow, Berkeley High School, and Puente have been meeting regularly to collaborate on the upcoming year, the plan for the upcoming year. And in addition to that, recruitment has already begun for Puente to begin. And then the last thing I'm gonna touch upon on this slide is the multilingual master plan development. So CAVE, so the California Association for Bilingual Educators, and the district's multilingual leadership team has met regularly. At each session, the leadership team receives professional development and updates on state and federal guidelines related to English learners. The team also works on drafting sections of the plan to be included in the updated plan. CAVE has also provided updates at a previous board meeting, an open DLEC meeting, and has met with our Latinos and Niños of Berkeley partners. An English Learner Survey link in support of the work for the multilingual master plan has also gone out to our families in the community. And the work for the multilingual plan will continue into the fall, and the plan is to have a draft of the plan by November, so that we can present it to the community and to the school board. Okay, so with all that being said, this year, we learned a lot in regards to community engagement. Because of the pandemic, Zoom was a necessary platform in order to get for engagement to occur. Zoom did provide opportunities to connect, but it also removed things such as face-to-face interactions, feedback sessions, and ultimately, the option to sit down and have a meal together and connect with our families and work on supporting our community, our students, and our staff. On the flip side, we also learned that for some families, Zoom provided an easier access to participate, because they could remain at home. The hope is that the upcoming year, we will be able to provide as many opportunities, if not more, that we can foster engagement with our Latinx community. And the next slide, Ruben, please. Okay, so the following slides, I think three slides, are references to the community engagement activities in more detail. And like Ruben previously stated earlier, I'm not gonna go through all of the information, but I am gonna highlight a few things. On this slide.
Yeah, just pause between each sentence. We just want to really give Isabel the opportunity. I know this is new for all of us, and it definitely takes practice to do that type of translation.
Do you think she's ready for me to go to the next slide? Okay. Sorry, Isabel. Okay, so on this slide, as you can see, it highlights PTI, Project to Inspire, and PK. And so with that being said, the Special Projects Department partnered with the Office of Family Engagement and Equity to support the rollout of these two programs. And on this table, it shows how families were recruited to attend these opportunities. Perfect. Okay, on this slide, as you can see, we're highlighting the English learner survey, Puente, and the Latino Family Literacy Project. And so what this slide is showing is that the additional efforts that were made in an attempt to obtain feedback for the English learner survey, and the work that has been happening and will be happening moving forward for Puente and the Latino Family Literacy Program. And on this slide, as you can see, the highlight is a multilingual master plan. And this slide provides information on the work associated with the plan. And as you can see, COVID impacted the work, and there was a need to extend the process into the next school year. The original plan was to have the plan finished by June of this year, but because of the COVID surge and the halt that we had to do with the work, it was brought to the board for approval that we wanted to extend the work into the next academic year. And with that, we wanted to say that we, you know, we wanted to, we want to complete the plan as best as possible, and the team really felt strongly that we should not rush the process and take that at a time.
Okay, I think Lisa, this is me and Ruth. One of the efforts in the resolution is a partnership with Latinos and Niños de Berkeley. And the bulleted item here demonstrates that myself, the Superintendent, Lisa Stupin, our Director of Categoricals, we met monthly with Latinos and Niños to both dialogue and to hear concerns, to hear suggestions, and to provide updates on the work associated with the Latinx. Ruth, are you on to speak to the next two?
Yes, I can, but I'll also be talking about it on the data slide. So really just that there's a commitment from my team to ensure that as we're gathering data three times a year from Star and Dibbles, that it's shared with principals that we're looking at that data to assess student progress, and I'll speak to what we've got so far later on in this presentation.
This slide just shows the language related to that partnership that we have with both Rhea, with the Office of Family Engagement Equity, which have been a tremendous partner in this work. We're very proud and excited that we were able to hire two bilingual-speaking OFI specialists this year. So shout out to Ernesto Marine and Alejandro Frias, who have been tremendous in supporting this work centrally. They're the ones doing a lot of the outreach to our Latinx families. They're supporting Longfellow, Berkeley High, Student Recruitment, Puente, and a number of other, basically. If we ask them to do it, they're doing it. They've been tremendous additions to Berkeley. This item here in the resolution specifically names the work associated with our English learners and making sure that we're providing progress reporting to the community. So the items we've listed here, the work around the multilingual master plan, which Lisa already spoke to. We did provide an update to the board mid-year, and we are continuing to provide updates. We're most recently providing an update to the work with CAVE. We've presented data to the DLEC group around English learners. And this presentation this evening also meets one of those requirements in our attempt to ensure that the presentation is both delivered in English and Spanish to the community. Like I said, a lot of text on these slides, but that's the language of the resolution that we wanted to include. This specifically names some of the celebrations that we've held and recognitions. We had a fantastic Latinx, Latin Heritage Month celebration back in late October, and that was a wonderful partnership with Latinos and Niños in planning that event. We've had a number of site-based activities in the month of October, and our library services has provided curated to our schools. Additionally, there are services we were providing for students to promote college-going culture and readiness. Lisa mentioned that we did put on hold the Latino Family Literacy that will launch next year. We felt it was just one too many things this year, everything we were trying to take on. And I believe that was a good call to delay that effort and have, we don't want to fix everything in one year. We want to take our time, of course, right? So we'll have some things to work on next year. We've done some site recruitment in August. We will continue to do that. Puente is a program we're extremely excited about. We will be launching cohorts for Longfellow and Berkeley High. There'll be 7th grade and 10th grade initial cohorts in the fall. Just as an update, the 7th grade cohort is nearly full as we speak. Last I checked, there was maybe 11 seats available in that cohort. So if you're a 6th grader at Longfellow, you're a Latino 6th grader at Longfellow, please, 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 reach out to the school, reach out to the counselor. Let's get you signed up for Puente. And lastly, a couple more items in the resolution specifically. We have a resolution posted, both on our websites, but also on our school sites. And then, you know, the work we do, you know, this is just one. And then, you know, the work we do, you know, this is just one of the many resolutions that we really do work to honor our communities of color, especially our Latinx, Asian community, African-American community and our API community. So this next section, I'm actually going to be turning it over to Ruth. We're going to take a dive into the data because part of the resolution does call for us to present the, the student data. And so she will take it over from here.
Thank you so much, my son and my dog. In the background, so hopefully they're both quiet. And so that was a lot of really good background and context. And of course, the, the goal of all of that work is to help ensure that our students are doing better each time we gather assessment data and making progress toward being grade level proficient in all content areas. And the resolution speaks to certain data points that should be tracked and reviewed. And I took the liberty of adding some to this presentation because they weren't actually referenced in the resolution, but it seemed like they maybe should be. So if you look at the list on this slide, the, the items that have a little star next to them weren't actually referenced in the resolution, the other items were. So you'll see on here that K two Dibbles and IDL, high school, English and other ELA data wasn't actually called out specifically in the resolution. The other areas were the grade three, five math, eighth grade math, and then the college and career readiness. And UC CSU data was. So we've, we've gone through. Yeah.
Remember to give breaks, take a breath between sentences so Isabel can translate.
I was gonna pause it then in the slide, but I'll do it as well. So there are two, two basic data sets. There's the data that was already outlined in the resolution and then some additional points. So I'll pause there. So initially, these first few slides are looking at Dibbles data and Dibbles and IDL are a literacy screener used for K through second grade students. And what you'll notice when we look at the slides in the moment is that there are differing rates of English proficiency or language acquisition or literacy, however you choose to frame it for each of our groups. And I'll pause for a second and then we'll look at the actual data slides. So there are, there are two, this slide and the next slide are comparison slides. So we might have to bounce back and forth a little bit. So you can see the patterns. This is the kindergarten through second grade data for Dibbles. We did separate, a separate slides for IDL because that's the assessment given at Sylvia Mendez. So we wanted to look at that separately because it's a dual immersion program. So this is all the kindergarten through second grade students from the fall and the next slide is the same data for the winter. And what you'll probably notice as Ruben goes back and forth between them is that the patterns are very similar between fall and winter. Now, the goal we would hope is that we'd see improvement. And at winter, we would expect to see an improvement. And I'm just going to share that I think part of the reason there isn't an improvement or a large improvement across any subgroup is because we hit that COVID pause right after the winter break. So there were some students that ended up not being able to take the assessment. We were doing a lot of COVID testing at school sites. So I think there was some level of disruption just in terms of instructional delivery and assessment completion at that time. There is a final round of testing happening right now for the school year, which I think will give us a much clearer picture of the progress made across the whole year. So I just want to frame the data in that context and, and know that it, it may not be a perfect representation of where students really are because I think we would have seen improvements across the board had we not been really pivoting at that time in the year and switching a lot of site capacity to COVID management, which is what was happening at that time. And what you'll notice on these two slides is that for the group of Latinx students in particular, there isn't a lot of change in terms of those colored bars. Essentially, the best way to read this is that if students are in the blue or the green category, then they're at or above grade level. If they're orange or red in terms of their category, then they're either below or far below where they should be. And you'll notice that the bars don't move very much. There's a slight shift, but not a whole lot. And what we would be looking for is those blue and green bars to be a larger percentage of each column and those red and orange bars to be a smaller percentage of each column. And again, you can see that there's, there are some slight shifts, but there isn't a lot of change. And you know, that, that may be largely because of some of the disruptions we saw after break. And it could be that we've got work to do around instructional goals and changing outcomes. But I, I would highlight the fact that those patterns exist for all of the subgroups across those slides. And they're pretty similar in terms of outcomes. Let's move to the next one. So this is just looking at our EL students and our Latinx EL students. We broke them out into two separate groups. And there you can see on this slide that there's a lot, there's pretty high level of students, those orange and red markers. This is for the fall. And then again, if you look at the next slide for winter, those numbers jump actually more than on those previous slides, especially for our Latinx EL students. They went from about 50% in that red and orange bar up to 60, almost 62%. So that's, that's a big deficit in the winter. So it would be really nice to, to learn more about why that happened for those students because that's not the direction that that data should be going. So clearly there's something happening there. And we'd need to take a look and dive deeper into who those kids are, what that instruction is looking like to try and figure out what's going on. But you can see there are some little spots in here where the, the data definitely isn't going in the right direction. It should be going the other way. Those red and orange bars should be getting smaller, not bigger. So that's K through second grade. Again, that's the literacy screener that we adopted this year for, for K through second grade students. So let's go.
And Ruth, and Ruth, one thing I also noticed here, and because this is a small group, the Latinx is yell. There's a difference of eight students from fall to winter and that's pretty substantial number of missing students in that column. So if, we don't know if those eight students had tested or not, if the breakdown would look different. That because those eight, it's, it's considerable difference, eight students that are missing in those.
Yeah. It is, and they didn't test. We don't have data for them. So they could have had COVID. They could have been out. They, you know, there's a variety of reasons. We had, we had a lot of missing kids in that winter session for different reasons. So it definitely could have skewed the data for that reason. So these next two slides show what happened at Sylvia Mendez. And I would like to highlight that something is working really well as part of that program because this data looks, looks a little bit different. So IDL is the, the version of Dibbles that we're using at Sylvia Mendez as an immersion program. It's especially designed version for Spanish-speaking students. So if we go to the next two slides, you can see that if you look at those red and orange bars again, or the green bar between fall and winter, which are the two, two slides, you can see that the, the trajectory is going in the right direction this time. So in the, on this winter slide, there are a smaller percentage of students scoring in those orange and red bars versus the green bar, which is what you want to see. That's, that's ultimately what you would hope to see in terms of progress. There isn't a blue bar for IDL. It just has three categories. Benchmark means they're where they should be. Strategic means they need some support. And then red means that they need a significant intervention. So if you go back and forth between those two slides, you can definitely see that for Latinx students and other groups, there's an improvement in their progress across the board, which is encouraging. That's, that's, that's a good thing. And then the next two slides are broken out again by Latinx EL for fall and winter. And there's just this one slide for this group and you can see that the bars are definitely going in the right direction. Of course, it's actually easier to see on one slide. So they, the, the number of students needing that intensive support dropped from 32% down to 23, which is a big drop. That's, that's really positive data. And there was an almost 5% increase in kids meeting benchmark. So again, we need to take a look at how that works happening at Sylvia Mendez to identify the kinds of practices and strategies that are helping kids be successful. All right. So this next little set is grades three through five for math. This was called out in the resolution originally. As I said, the, the Dibbles and IDL data wasn't, but we also weren't using those programs a year ago. So that's new data. We have STAR has been used to measure both math and ELA, but we just put the math data in this slide deck. So we weren't looking at too many data slides. And you'll see that a similar pattern here as we did initially for the K two students in terms of progress being made. So if you take a look at the, again, this is, this is the fall slide and the next slide is the winter slide. And unfortunately, you can see again that there's a slight increase in the students in those red and orange bands and a decrease in the students in those green bands. And again, that it could be testing numbers, it could be disruption due to that COVID pause after winter break. I'm hopeful that the data we're gathering right now will show some different patterns, but it may not, in which case we really do have to dig deeply and find out why our kids aren't doing better because those patterns are in place across each of these groups for the most part. And we were actually having a discussion this morning at the principal's meeting about how to really ensure that we're, we're looking at how kids are performing in math and finding ways to ensure that students are doing better in math. We were working on assessments for next year and how to really ensure that we have the right data and we can look at changing outcomes for kids. And again, this is broken out by English language learners and our Latinx English language learners. And this is the fall data for the two groups. This is the winter data. And they're not massive changes, but they're still not going in the right direction. Again, this, we should be seeing progress. And, and again, I'll also add, this is the importance of using multiple measures for assessing student progress because STAR is just one way of looking at how kids are doing to really paint a full picture. We can look at student grades. We can look at other assessments. We, we talked this morning about adding some performance tasks, which can also be used to create more culturally responsive teaching practices in our classrooms. They're a lot more engaging for students. So there are some other ways we can actually look at how students are doing rather than just looking at one data set, which I think is also a really important puzzle piece for next year. So the next two slides are for sixth through eighth grade. They do take STAR, but we decided to not put more STAR slides in. We thought maybe looking at something else would be, would be interesting. So these are the grades for middle school. And I don't know if you remember from a previous presentation, students get two grades in middle school. They get a habits of work grade, which is basically effort or engagement and then an SPP grade, which is standards-based progress. So what we did on the next two slides is break out the, and it's a bit busy. I apologize for all the, the bars, but you can kind of see the patterns here. So this is math. Students with, in the red category are getting ones, which is the lowest grade. It's far below progress level. And then green and blue are at and above progress. So you can compare the heights of those bars across each of those little subsections. We put all of them on one slide just so you could see them next to each other. And there are some very different patterns across each group, as you can see. The same trends are on the next slide, which is English. So you can kind of see some areas where different subgroups stand out for positive or for negative reasons. And I would just say that if students are green or blue, that basically means they're at or above grade level. So there are some, some high points. There are a lot of English language learners who are doing, they're at grade level. They're not surpassing grade level. But when you look at those red bars, some of those are a little higher than they should be for, for some of our subgroups, especially Latinx EL. That's probably the highest percentage of students getting that, that grade one. So again, the, what this tells me is that we, we need to do some, some digging and find out why these patterns exist and where students are successful, if it's tied to specific practices and strategies or where they're unsuccessful, if that's tied to an absence of those strategies. So that's the end of the academic data section. This is the reclassification data, which is relatively steady. For the top row shows our population of English language learner students across the last three years. So it stayed relatively steady. There aren't a lot of changes. And then our reclassification rate is slightly lower this year than it was last year, but it hasn't changed significantly. Those are fairly small changes. There's Lisa and her team have done a lot of work this year to kind of align processes and really look at ways to ensure all the assessments are done more comprehensively. So we're hoping next year we might see an uptick in those reclassification rates based on the work that's happened this year. But again, we won't know until, till the fall if that's really true.
I can add as well, I know that this year with not having the, the smarter balance assessment taken last year, we've had to use alternative assessments to do reclassifications. And so that has had an impact as well. So going into next school year, we will have smarter balance assessment data to look at in addition to the local assessment.
Yes, and there were some students, we have, we had a very hard time testing for different reasons in the spring. So there were some students who maybe if we hadn't had so many absences and disruptions, we could have tested more students more quickly. But we definitely had some students, we weren't able to, to retest or reclassify who may have qualified. And this is the same data, just in a graphic form to show you kind of the, the visual representation of that pattern over time. So the last part of the data piece is just looking at the UC CSU rates. And there's a website that we, an online service we use called Transcript Valuation Services that give us a lot of data around UC and CSU completion. So the next two slides show all of our 11th graders across the high schools. Basically, it shows the different categories for UC CSU completion. So if the bar is blue, then that's the percentage of students meeting those subject areas. If the bar is yellow, it means they're not. And what's interesting to me is often people think math is the biggest gatekeeper for students. It's not. It's English. If you look at this graph, you can really clearly see that, that those fourth, fifth and sixth bars represent the English requirement. Those are the longest yellow bars. So those are the biggest deficits in terms of all of our students meeting the UC CSU requirements. And then if you look at the next slide, which shows the same bars for our Latinx students, you can see the same pattern, but those, but those yellow bars are a lot deeper. So there's a, that's a huge area for us to look at at the high school level in terms of why almost, it's almost half of our Latinx students are not meeting those requirements. It's 48, 54% versus 46%. And it shifts slightly over the next two years, but that's, that's a really large percentage of that particular population. And we have this data for all of our subgroups. But it's particularly noticeable for our Latinx or Hispanic students that that's an area for particular focus. Math is as well, but not as significant as English. So that definitely opens up some next steps in terms of high school programming and how kids are being supported there. So these last two slides just kind of summarize some of what I've shared. I'm not going to read them because I've kind of, I've really explained it already. I think that the biggest takeaway for me is looking at the IDL data at Sylvia Mendez and seeing how, how different that looks to some of, you know, to the other data for K two students. So my, I've, I've worked on both the curriculum and instruction side of this in the past as well as the assessment and intervention piece. And instruction is the way to move student outcomes. Always creating more engaging, more relevant, more accessible curriculum for students. And our, our work next year is going to be centered around instruction. How can we ensure that curriculum is accessible? And students are successful in meeting those grade level requirements. And where we have bright spots, we need to look at them and see what's happening. And where we have those places where students aren't performing, we've got to shine a light there too and see if there are particular reasons. So I think this data gives us a really good starting point. And really signposts the fact that we've got, we have work to do. No matter what the reasons for the, the, the winter data not looking great, we, it is our data, it's what we have. And when we come back in the fall, we'll be doing this again and looking at the data we're gathering right now to see if the patterns have shifted. But my work with Debbie Dean and the principals and the TSA's has really started, we've really started to collaborate. And looking at how the assessments match the opportunities for data analysis and how we can translate that data analysis into instructional goals. And that's what we've really started doing the last few months and will be continuing into next year. So I think I will leave it there. Thank you so much for Ben.
Thank you, Ruth. And, and this is our final slide, which is just. We'll, we'll be taking questions from the board. Couple bullets of next steps. We are obviously going to continue to monitor the data. We've just mentioned the work that they're doing in partnership with the site leaders and the TSA's. One thing I'm really excited about for next year is not only do we have an assessment calendar where we mark when we give the assessments. We're having our site leaders really think through the next phase of that, which is now that you have the data. Ensuring there is time to analyze the data, to think about the next steps, to think about what you can actually do to change. The outcome of that data. So that's a really important step. That's going to be actually in the assessment calendar. That there is going to be real dedicated time for that work. And of course, as mentioned earlier, we want to finalize the multilingual master plan and have that ready to go. We did set aside funding both to complete the plan, but also to implement the actions of the plan. That would include time for professional development, because as those recommendations are made for how to improve our services for English learners. We're going to need to train our, our staff to implement those new changes. And then lastly, I think we mentioned earlier, our observations of engagement with our families. We are hopefully, fingers crossed with COVID, going to return to in-person engagement opportunities that we know. You know, when you provide childcare and you feed your families and you take that lift off the adults plate. They're much more able to engage in the work with us. So we're very excited about that opportunity. With that, I wanted to give a special thank you to Isabel for working with us this evening to help translate this. I know it was the first time doing it this way. We were all learning in this work. With that, we are here for questions.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to the Board of Education for questions. As they're raising their hands, I'll go ahead and jump in with my first question, because I do have many. But thank you all so much for the presentation. Again, a highlight to Director Vasudev for her work on this. I want to. Call out and appreciate the academic data section. I know that the Latinx resolution calls out two things around data. Number one, which is analyzing academic achievement data. And number two, which is to have. Updates about the data. And so thank you for calling that out. I say all that, however, to say that it was challenging to see the data that we saw. It was definitely a hard pill to swallow. I gotta. You all know that I wear my expressions on my face, and so I'm sure that you saw a few expressions as the data was presented. I do, however, want to call out and appreciate the. Excellence that was presented in the data. And I think that it is important to call out the, the brilliance and the resilience of our students. Who are performing well even during the most difficult time in education. And so I want to call that out first and then follow up with highlighting the work that has been done by Sylvia Mendez, as you did, Miss Steel Brown. To, to, you know, to improve academic outcomes for their students, which I'm sure was led by what you said, the instructional piece. But also, I'm sure in part creating welcoming environments for our students to be able to thrive in. I think that that is a, a highlight that many, so Sylvia Mendez is doing my question, right? Because we've got to give all the comments first before the question. So my actual question is what best, what additional best practices have you all been researching statewide? That have exemplified success in improving outcomes for our Latinx students? And what is your plan for implementation?
President Brown, I am really sorry. I heard half of your question. My earbuds were cutting in and out.
Well, don't you worry. I can say it again. My question is, in addition to looking at the best practices that have happened at Sylvia Mendez. And I will slow down because I know Isabella is translating. So in addition to the best practices that are happening at Sylvia Mendez, which I'm sure includes welcoming schools. What other best practices have you all been looking at statewide? And what is your plan for implementation of those best practices?
Thank you. So I think there's a couple of different things that are occurring here in Berkeley specifically. That's going to address not just our Latinx community, but really all learners. First and foremost, the work that we are doing around the literacy action plan is going to impact all of our learners. Especially the, in the early literacy, because we know that the literacy is going to be key in increasing the access. I was actually, as your reaction to the data is similar to my reaction to the data, President Brown. Especially when you looked at the A to G slides, where you see where English has become the gatekeeper. I also was under the impression that mathematics was that gatekeeper course, that it really is the literacy, it's the English piece of it. So addressing that at an early age, the interventions that we're bringing into, in place. We're also learning similarly, the work around the CCAS plan. I know that's a different targeted group, but that work. Has an impact on other learners as well. There are elements to that work, like the individual learning plans, which could be applied to Latinx, that Latinx ELS, for example. Really paying close attention to our students, closely monitoring that data, the movement to utilizing that data in a way that's very specific. Taking that dedicated time to look at our practice and examining is going to be key. So that's, you know, one, few items there. Of course, the work that Adalita has led in the professional development of our teachers has also been impactful. And that will continue. Always a challenge for our teachers and our teaching staff, just having the time, the dedicated time for professional development. That's something we've always had to address and continue to address.
Um, I'm going to go to Director Vasudev, but I look forward to touching base with you. Associate Superintendent, to also hear about plans for supporting not only designated ELD, but also integrated ELD. Which I think is super important for us to talk about as well.
Is there Brown, could I also add? You know, Ed Services, the Educational Services team will look different next year, not only with my departure, but with. The addition of the Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging, that key position is going to have a key role in the work we do. Especially around interventions for students in addressing the needs of not, of multiple groups, but specifically our Black and Brown students. So that's going to be an important position to ensure that we move that forward and have strong people in place.
Thank you. Director Vasudev and then Director, Vice President Bevan.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to thank the staff for this presentation, because I know a lot of work went into it. And I think, you know, looking back, this resolution was passed less than a year ago. But I think just understanding, right? Like the, the reason why it was so data heavy is just really understanding where are the specific areas? Where our students are falling behind in it. The language of the resolution was intentional to make us look very closely as a district. Where we heard in the twenty twenty vision, what those gaps were and how do we dig a little deeper to be able to address them? So I feel definitely that we made a lot of traction in identifying, you know, where are the growth areas for us as a district? Or we can better serve our students. And just wanted to really thank the whole team for all the work that you've done this year and for presenting the data. I just had some comments really quickly and I know that to see progress, it's going to take time, right? So I just want to acknowledge that off the bat. It's been less than a year, we've identified the problem. And in Spanish we say, yeah, ahora qué, now what? That's where we're at right now, in the point of this, like, okay, we know, this is what we thought, so now what? And then now what for me, you know, we planned for Puente, Puente is a program that's supposed to improve literacy outcomes. So seeing that data from the high school and knowing there's a program to address it. But I think that's where the recruitment becomes very important. And we heard some of those comments tonight from community members, making sure that the staff is culturally responsive. There's a reason why that is specifically called out in the resolution and making sure that we're working with the families, right? It's a wraparound service and which, which is why programs like Bika, you know, we've had these discussions and my board colleagues haven't been at those meetings with Latinos and Mules of Berkeley. But some of the engagement worked and some of it didn't. So Project To Inspire was, but Bika was really great because parents are meeting with their school community. You have more of a drawl when you're meeting with parents from your specific community. You want to plug in more, you kind of know them, you get to know them on a deeper level. And that's what we see with that high school cohort at BHS. You know, a lot of parents of English language learners plugging in, getting to know the administration of the high school. And feeling excited about getting their kids ready for college. And I hope, right, that we're going to see that with the Puente cohorts too, because progress takes time. So on the literacy front, that at Longfellow and that at Berkeley High, my hope is that next year, when we have this presentation, we're going to have some parents really excited. About the literacy outcomes of their kids and students too, right? And hopefully, if we do it right with culturally responsive staff, that's what we're going to get. So I just wanted to call that out. And also, some real growth areas that I've been hearing from the community as. Needs that we, that we have to be able to really address issues around reclassification. And so we know that the district is still hiring that ELD TSA for next year. And what an important role that will play, right, in making sure that we're serving all our English learners across the district, you know, pretty well. I'm glad to see that the Mendez models work, but all, there's a lot of other schools that have EL students. And so how are we supporting them in a consistent way? And I really want to just encourage the district to really prioritize the hiring of that ELD TSA and to communicate with the community about it. I, I love the Latinos and Mules, the Berkeley meetings, but I also think it's important that we make use of our Latinx resources page. To be able to have information on, you know, when are the meetings happening, to be able to use it more interactively. And have a copy of this presentation of tonight's presentation. I hope that that lives on that page, because the staff spent so much time putting it together. And because I think it's important that we're transparent with the community and how we're sharing this data, right? Like after today, I hope that's one of the first things that we upload on that resources page. My question is, so I have two questions, Associate Superintendent Aurelio for you or Superintendent Stevens. Now that we, now that we have the hour of gate and we know where the gaps are. What work is being done to improve math support, particularly at the middle school level for our Latinx students? And what are we going to do now? The, the English master, the yellow master plan, we know it's going to take longer. We all, and we all know the reasons why, but what are we doing now to help address some of those reclassification rates that we need to improve on, right? Because the reality is that the, the reclassification rates have gotten lower. And so what are we going to put in place now to be able to address that? And how are we going to support students, particularly at the middle school level around math?
Do you want me to jump in? I wish, but, okay. Well, one thing, and I, I feel like you gave me that softball pitch to promote our summer programming. Because we do have some extensive summer programming that's going to be offered, especially around STEM. Win Skills, our CTA coordinator, who's amazing and fantastic. I know every time he comes to a board meeting, I, you know. Things fly into the sky and sparkles. And Win has done a tremendous job of putting together a summer STEM program, really targeted to our Black and Brown students. Including our Latinx and our EL students. And in fact, at this point, there was a hundred, a hundred and eighty-one eligible Latinx students for this program. Forty percent of them being eligible. We've already enrolled forty-two, thirty-six percent of the forty that are eligible for that program. So that's really exciting. So really targeted efforts via the summer programming, including summer programming for two-way conversion as well. So Spanish language programming. And then we have also the partnership with the Step Up Academy. That does impact some of our Latinx students who are vision scholars. They have access to the Step Up Academy as well. And that's geared for their graded up students. So there's a variety of programs that we're bringing during the summer to sort of. Continue that work that we're doing for proving, as far as specifically in the mathematics area for middle school. That is just continued work that we're going to need to address as we move into next year. Working with our math TSA at the central office to help guide that work. In addition to our Director of Kates Schools, Debbie Dean, and the work she's doing with her team with PD as well.
Uh, Vice President Bevan.
I think Director Sine and I was at first, you can go, it's fine.
Okay, sorry, Director Sine.
My hand fell down and then it went back up.
Okay, well, welcome back.
Thank you, Vice President. I was, I was, anyway. Thank you. First of all, thank you, Isabel, for the trans simultaneous translation. I think we all need to go through training on how to talk with a translator. Could you just, it, it, it's a slower pace. We need to pause. So thank you, Isabel, for your patience and your persistence in being able to do this. So now I'll talk really fast. So I have a couple of questions. I really appreciate the presentation. I really want to thank Director Vasudev for shepherding this from the board perspective. And Dr. Stevens and Associate Superintendent Aurelio for all your work. And Director Steel Brown and, and Director Stupin. This is really important work. Again, the data shows us what we've already seen frequently. I guess there's a couple of observations that I had that I think were a little different. To me, or not different, but different flags went up. And one of the flag is the realization that learning loss and COVID is deep. And we can't say that the data dipped. Oh, well, we hope it'll go back up. Because it's a reflection of what COVID is doing to our kids. So the question that I have, and you don't need to answer it now, it's really more of like, as we evolve in this. Is how will our instructional folks? Use the data in real time to adapt? Because this dramatic COVID impact, it's not going to just bounce back. It means doing things differently. And I don't know what the answer is, but that's the flag that I got with that, not a, I hope it's better in the spring. It's like, wow. The loss is just cumulative. And how do we deal with that? The other observation I had was on the A through G. I would not be ready to say math is not also a gatekeeper. We made improvement in math this year. That doesn't mean the gates open. That means what did we do? That improved math, because I looked, you know, it was quick. The slide went up, I don't know if you want to pull it up again, but what I think I saw was English in all three years. In that thirty, I think it was thirty-five or whatever percent. Math, year one, year two, at that same low level, but in year three, it went up to twenty-four percent. So when I see that, I see math is still a gatekeeper, but we did something in twenty and twenty-one. What did we do? And did that intervention, was that a result? Intervention or multiple interventions? And can we learn from it? And one year does not mean the gate opened. So I would, I would be hesitant to say that it's not a gatekeeper.
And Director Sine, that twenty twenty-one year is essentially a fully COVID.
People. Were eligible, I went to hundred twenty. Yeah, so I mean, so I, I'm not, it's, it's not a keeper anymore. I, I think we watch and see, and maybe that's a good. Question. Associate Superintendent Aurelio is like, what aspects of virtual learning actually work for math? You know, or what, what, what were the? So, you know, I have a little bit different lens. Um, and then the question that I had um, is will we look at cohort data? Where we're looking at same kids year to year versus or in addition to just the, the years themselves?
Ruth, do you want to answer the cohort data question?
Yeah, I mean, best practice is to do that so that we're comparing apples to apples and apples to oranges. Because the problem with comparing year to year data is it's never the same group of kids. So if we're really interested in tracking student progress and seeing if there are significant improvements for the same group, we have to do it that way. Um, and I'm hoping that now we've got really comprehensive data this year. Now we're hopefully out of COVID and able to gather data for all of our kids. We can do that kind of longitudinal analysis and, and see how our kids are doing as they progress from grade level to grade level.
Thank you for all your work.
Vice President Babett.
Yes, thank you so much, and I uh concur with my um appreciation for this deep dive into obviously the data, you all know I like to uh to be able to really analyze the data. And so my first question is, um, in the earlier uh presentations, a few board meetings ago, when you first came with data, there were some questions um that we wanted to get responses back from our um school side staff to better understand how they're in, going to use this data to interpret it, to create that pivot. Um, was there ever a structure created to actually collect the information back from those questions? Yeah, I mean, if no is the answer, I just need to know that.
President Babett, I got completely distracted in my house. But sorry about that. And my headphones died again, so I'm now off headphones.
Director Stevens, did you hear my question?
I, I did, and I'm, I'm recalling the presentation from several months ago. I think it was the last time that Ruth Brown Steel was here. And she described questions that the Brea team had created to prompt reflection by school, by school-based teams. Um, and I, and I don't know it was at that point ever the intention to collect back that information. I have, but Ruth, maybe I could turn it over to you on this one. And so I, I don't know that we will have collected sort of answers from every school. Um, so much as we were trying to provide prompts and, and Ruth, am I describing that correctly? Was that the intent?
Um, I think so. I remember that presentation also. And what those questions were really designed to help principals work with their teams to analyze data internally. We don't, Brea doesn't necessarily collect that data back. And we've actually run, um, I think probably three different professional developments sessions now for the principals to have them really look at their data strategically and specifically. We, we did it um maybe two months ago, which was after that presentation. Um, we wanted uh all of the K A principals to look at progress from um fall to winter, particularly with Dibbles as the literacy screener. So we're really trying to help support them in, in using that data with their site teams. And we actually met last week and again today in developing that assessment calendar to make sure they have, they have um designated time to do that work with their teams, which is why we redesigned the assessment calendar to ensure that they not only have a window for the assessment, but they have protected time to give teachers to analyze that data and talk about what it's telling them and how they can adjust instruction in response. So I don't think there's one specific answer back to those questions, but we've been using that kind of protocol to really help those discussions to happen in a very thoughtful and strategic way. I hope that helps.
Yes, that is helpful because, you know, ultimately we can look at the data, but if we don't have a plan to um use it to turn it into information, um, then we will continue to look at um this data. And um Director Sine, I just in response to your um kind of noticing about math, um, studies do show that grades were significantly inflated during the pandemic. Um, so I would definitely concur with you that math is still a, a significant gatekeeper and something that we need to definitely ensure that we focus on in our um instructional leadership. Um, my other question was around the um Ophi specialist at um Longfellow Middle School in particular. I know that we had um put full-time resources there and um one of those Spanish-speaking bilingual officers is out. And um I was getting calls from um a, an Ophi person that doesn't actually speak Spanish. And so I think we really need to be intentional with our resources to ensure that if we, we have a majority bilingual school, that we make sure that we replace those um resources with people who can actually reach out. Because I, I understand they're at the district office helping to support and call, but it's also about being on the ground, building relationships, seeing, seeing parents at drop off and pick up and, and being a part of the community, which is so important. So um if we're going to be intentional about having bilingual resources, we read, we need to be intentional about assigning them at our schools that um have the highest Spanish-speaking populations as well. And then my next comment was really um in appreciation to pointing out our need to increase first level instruction. And I think that was one of the um most impressive things about um uh Anikiya Ford Mirthel on her um during her interview process, how she talked about uh the each and every. And so I just want to, if you don't mind, just really read to you all um kind of what her thought pattern is. Because it's really going to hopefully direct us into taking all of what you all have said around improving first level instruction and um making that difference. So really quick, I'll read really fast. Please comment on the most significant contributions you feel you have made in a leadership position. This is the reply. As Deputy Superintendent, my contribution is leading the district's shift towards instructional coherence and organizational clarity in service of SFUSD's bold mission and vision for each and every student. I'm committed to more equitable and scaled access to excellence and believe that coherence is essential to doing so. I communicate and rally stakeholders around a shared why, common purpose, clear goals, and individual and collective roles in realizing that goal. The graduate's profile is clear and expectations for instruction, resource allocation, and policy that will get us there are aligned and articulated. I've made the vision tangible and practical at every level of the organization. This has been a critical contribution to the educational system that perpetuates inequitable experiences and outcomes because of accepted variability in access, opportunities, and expectations. It's required consistency, calibration, collaboration, and alignment of each person and department in service of student learning. I operally, I operationalized, I can't get that word. I operationalized a bold and inspiring vision for what education will look like by creating structures and systems that build the capacity of all involved to do this critical work. I have reorganized this large urban system to truly operate as a unified school system. The results are increased academic outcomes for historically underserved groups, increased collective efficacy and collaboration across communities, and trends of continued progress towards district targets. So I'm so looking forward to supporting her in um specifically creating that unified first level of instruction, that organizational clarity. Because when we have a school like Sylvia Mendez that we can look to as doing well for one scrub group, I'd like to be able to look across all of our schools and see that same uh beneficial pattern for um each and every student. And so I appreciate you all taking the time to hear me and um to hear the vision of our future superintendent as well. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Babett. I know that Isabel was not able to translate that in real time though, so.
Sorry, Julie, you just told me.
Sorry about that, folks, but thank you.
Thank you. Before I call in, um, Student Director Mascarini Swan, I want to say that I went into the uh interpretation room for Spanish and Isabel is doing a phenomenal job. Um, and so Isabel is also working faster than we think Isabel is working. So thank you Isabel for, for your support. I will go to Student Director Mascarini Swan.
Thank you, Director Brown. Um, I'll keep my comments brief. Um, I'd also really like to voice my appreciation for this presentation and all the really in-depth data. Um, I think something that really jumped out to me, especially when Director Sine was speaking about the learning losses due to COVID and looking at the data where we can kind of compare Latinx students with other ethnicities. It seems pretty clear that a lot of the other groups of students aren't experiencing the same diminished scores as like their Latinx and black counterparts. Um, and so I think what that jumps out to me as assuming that they were all in the same class is taking the same tests and the same COVID test presumably. Um, like, I think that just really speaks to the impacts of the pandemic on learning loss specifically for Latinx and black students. And so I'm wondering what the district is doing with that information to specifically target those, those students in terms of the learning loss that they're facing due to specifically, specifically COVID. I know that like vaccination outreach is one of those things, but I'm wondering what else is happening um as part of the district's efforts. I'm sure that this data is being replicated in a lot of other areas. So yes, that's my question. I'll direct it, oh.
Who are, who are you directing the question to?
Um, you or direct, or Dr. Stevens.
Dr. Stevens, you go on this one.
You want to, you want to tap me on this one? And, and I think Director Mascarini Swan, you're, you're asking both about academic supports, but also about COVID supports.
Yeah, I mean, clearly they're interrelated, like as, um, yeah, as Miss Steel Brown pointed out in her presentation, we're clearly seeing a pretty clear correlation. And it would be kind of silly not to presume that there is a correlation. Um, and so I think both in terms of interpersonal supports due to COVID impacts and then also academic supports due to COVID impacts. It's, I mean, it's all interrelated in, in my, in my purview, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so just to sort of speak very briefly about um support specifically for Latinx and Spanish-speaking Latinx students related to COVID. Um, we have been running multiple campaigns over the course of better than a year um to support both, both COVID mitigation practices, um to support the Spanish-speaking community to understand COVID, the effect of COVID and ways to prevent its transmission. Um, that's gone everywhere from family seminars, bilingual family seminars hosted by UCSF um to bilingual vaccination clinics, um to youth-led campaigns. Um, and currently, right now, we're in partnership with City of Berkeley to design yet another um targeted vaccine campaign. And an aspect of that is to reach out to students of color included, including Latinx students um who right now are hesitant to get the vaccine. So there's been a pretty broad portfolio of work. Um, it is slow-going at this point, but nonetheless really important. And then over um sort of on the, the sort of academic side, we've talked a little bit about efforts taking place in sort of a variety of pockets. They include summer programs um that are very robust this summer. Um, they also include um things like enhanced counseling support. Um, we've introduced a number of partners um into the district to support with parent education. Um, that's been another important part of it. And then Ruth Brown, Steel, Steel Brown was just talking about support for school-based teams uh to be able to study data. And it is, I think, an accomplishment this year that we finally have a more complete set of data across all of our schools. It's been historically difficult to have that complete set of data here in Berkeley, so that, that is itself an accomplishment. Um, so those are just a few things. Um, specific schools have more enhanced supports. I think particularly about Longfellow School and some of the added investments that we've made in Longfellow, adding the seven-period day uh and enhancing their instructional staff to, to provide interventions. So we could, we could talk more at length, um, but there's a number of academic interventions as well that um are in place. I won't describe that any of these things are adequate. We continue to see test scores that are really alarming to us. Uh, and I think that there's just continues to be an opportunity through our budgeting process and in the next year um to do better by students right now who are underserved.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm interested to see what the data continues to look like throughout the spring and, and this following quarter. Um, but it seems like in the day, what the data is demonstrating is that those programs haven't really been very effective or have been effective and maybe mitigating, but not completely diminishing the curb in terms of the actual like data being presented. So yeah, I think just in terms of the, especially I think the vaccine and like COVID information efforts and like outreach, I think that there's definitely a lot of room to maybe improve on that as we like move into next year. I know this is, you know, definitely an area of growth for the district. So just learning continuing, because we know this pandemic won't end and the impacts on these specific marginalized communities won't either. So just continuing those efforts and improving, I think is important.
We agree.
Thank you.
Director Alper.
Okay, thanks. I will be quick, and I only have a comment, not a question, but my comment is about the um the Sylvia Mendez data that you, that you called out, um, Director Steel Brown, um, which I really appreciate. I remember back from before I was even on the board when I was on the Rosa Parks SGC and we were always asking for data that disaggregated TWI, back when TWI was at Rosa Parks. TWI students from English-only students, um, because we wanted to see if the data in BUSD was consistent with the research that showed that monolingual Spanish-speaking English learners um do better generally in, when they're um instructed in their home language. Um, and it was always really hard to get that data from the district. And so um what you, when you said that, you know, they're doing something right at Sylvia Mendez, that I'm, I'm sure that is the case and is partly what President Brown said about the sort of culture and climate that's created at a school that is where, where the entire school is a TWI school. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to consolidate the program at one elementary school so that it wasn't diffused across three different schools. But then also just the model of, of dual immersion instruction. Um, it's, it is, is, I, I hope, I think, a, a reason for the you know, positive, more positive, relatively proportionally positive um academic outcomes at that school. So um we don't really talk about it that much, the, the, the research that supports dual immersion instruction for English learners, because it's an English learner program. It's an enrichment program for English speakers, but it's a, but the reason we have it is, is, is an English learner program. And um, and so I just wanted to take a moment to, to spotlight that it seems like, at least for this one data point, not to overstate it, that it, that it seems to, to be consistent with the research that supports that model of instruction for Spanish-speaking English learners. So I, I really appreciated you, um, Director Steel Brown, calling that out specifically.
Uh, thank you for your comment, uh, Director Alper. I think we're going to go into a second round of questions, so I'll begin with mine and then pass it over to you, Director Vasudev. Um, I want to spend some time talking about reclassification. Um, so if we could maybe pull up the uh reclassification slide. And so the first thing that I thought that I heard um from you all, specifically from you, uh, Director Steel Brown, was around uh reclassification uh around the challenges for offering the um the LPEC test this year for reclassification. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, um, I, I wanted to take a second to um to unpack that. And from the um specific standpoint of, we had students who were um ready and prepared uh to take the test this year. Um, I know, you know, because of COVID, uh, you know, it was, it wasn't offered. Um, however, this data allows for um flexibility in when we provide um that test. So if it wasn't offered during the time of um, you know, the increases around uh the, or the uptake, the uptick in cases for COVID, um, I think the state made um an an allowance of four months after January to be able to do that. So I wanted to understand, um, you know, what happened there and to understand more of, you know, we have, had those students who were prepared uh to take, you know, prepared to take the, the test. Um, what supports are currently given to them to continue that preparation because the test wasn't offered to them? Um, so that's, that's the first question I have for reclassification. And then the second question um that I have is, you know, what is our plan of action really to um improve our reclassification rates, especially for um those of the, our students who are considered to be like long-term um English language learners? And what is our plan of action to support our students who have been identified as um English language proficient? English language proficient, knowing that the state requires us uh to monitor them for four years? So that's three questions. Um, and if I need to repeat them, I don't mind doing that.
So there's a couple of different things there. Let's see. Lisa, do you want to speak to the monit- let's go backwards, monitoring piece? Because I know we also have systems that we're putting in place for that.
So in regard to the monitoring, you are correct. We do have to monitor our students for four years. And so part of what we're building also, just to let you know, because everything previous, well, this year and back has been on paper, right? And so I, from when I came in, I know that we had difficulty upkeeping that information and truly, you know, doing a meticulous job um on being able to to get the right information into these documents. Has it been occurring? Yes. Could we do better? Always. And so we we are working with Elevation, who is supporting us moving forward, and the rollout for that will be next year. And so we with the ELD staff and the District Raya team staff and myself and um, you know, my current TSA that's, you know, as we all know, is leaving. We've been working on you know, um streamlining our um monitoring forms so that we ensure that we're putting the correct assessments on there because full transparency, some of the assessments that were listed on the original document are no longer being used. So our staff is kind of like, you know, asking questions. Okay, what are we doing to monitor our kids? And so when we have the the meetings, we are able to talk about it. So what we're now implementing and putting in place are is streamlining the process. So it makes it easier for the staff on site that touch our kids that need to be monitored can fully, you know, um, complete this documentation compliantly and in order to support the kids better so that if I was a new teacher coming in and, you know, touching these students and I wasn't there last year, I can take this monitoring and know that what was done last year is going to be done again this year and the year after that for the next, you know, four years that we need to monitor the child. So that is, that is a process that we are implementing and we are pretty far in the process to be quite frank. So um, I am very hopeful for next year. The plan is to really work on it over the summer so that when we meet with our ELD staff and and even the principals, because it has to be buy-in from all of us in understanding the process that will be fully rolling next year and will be all on the same page in regards to monitoring our students.
And if Ruth can speak to the LPAC testing, I know this year, I believe, we we hit our targets for LPAC testing. I know there was challenges last year during COVID, um, and that some, in fact, some students we were able to test this fall that might have missed last year. Um, especially those who were on the borderline of being reclassified, but maybe Ruth, can you add to that?
Yeah, I I mean, we, I have a wonderful TSA on my team who's been helping Lisa as well and Kathleen has really single-handedly led most of the the LPAC testing work. So I think we've been able to get every single kid assessed within the extended window this year, but part of the problem is this year's assessment was based on last year's data and a lot of last year's data was incomplete. So that's another piece of the puzzle that made it challenging. Um, so I think there are just kids who couldn't be reclassified because there wasn't enough solid data or information to really make that decision. And then we did have some kids, we had a really hard time tracking down and really um, I think, I think we ended up getting everybody assessed, but the reclassification was done. I mean, it's not being done right now. It's been, it was done a while ago. So there may be kids we can catch in the fall um and move them up a level, but I don't think um we were able to reach every single kid and, you know, the initial timeline for doing that. And then the 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 incomplete data from last year is a huge challenge too, but uh Kathleen's been very clear that she thinks based on the data we've gotten this year, now that we've got way more complete assessment data and and the increased work the site's doing and the additions to the master plan that we should be in a a different position in the fall and in the springs where we reclassifying students next year. So she's pretty confident that we'll see a an increase in that rate for next school year, which is really encouraging.
And President Brown, I know that recently, actually, the last couple of weeks, I've worked pretty closely with Gloria Munoz, our TS, the ELTSA to identify and do some reclassification of some of our high schoolers who, for whatever reason, either had some incomplete data. Um, so we really had to lean on other me- measures as well as grades and teacher recommendations. And so we did do some reclassifications of students who might not have been reclassified if we strictly looked at the the data for that. Um, so we did do some of those as well. Um, and then I believe there's the alternative LPAC that's either coming next year that will allow us or help us reclassify students who might not have reclassified in the past as as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm looking forward to the implementation of um that adjusted uh exam for our, for our students. I'm happy to hear the work that is being done currently to ensure that we can can support our, um, you know, our long-term English language learners. Um, this is also a shout out to the state for uh giving us the app, giving all of us across the state uh the opportunity to turn in um additional uh to the opportunity to reach the uh four levels of criteria with additional opportunities like the teacher recommendations that you mentioned in other grades. Um, I think that is equity at its highest point. Um, and I'm happy to hear that that's happening. Director Vasudev.
Yeah, I just wanted um again to thank everyone for for the presentation and just, you know, um, something that Director Alper said, and I wanted to thank him to just for his leadership with the TWI program and for um Director Steel Brown's comments that there is something that's going well at Mendez. And so now what's, how do we take the next step, right? How do we dig in a little deeper? Because the reality is that we have English learners at all our, all our sites, right? And so how do we support them across the board in a consistent way, but really take those best practices? I didn't want to lose sight of what you said, Associate Superintendent Odeyo, how important it would be to have those individual learning plans, how we can learn from CSES in that process to be able to better support our REls. So I'd love to see, um, maybe, you know, and we can connect offline, but just to kind of see how we can put some some things in place to kind of get that support already for our REls even before the completion of the master plan. Because I think wherever we can take best practices and support other vulnerable populations, we should, right? And so if there's something that's happening for Latinx students that can support our African-American students, let's do it. Let's learn how to, you know, really take best practices and support all our vulnerable students. I think that's really important. And um also, I'm just to reiterate again, the importance of getting someone in that TSA role, that ELD TSA role as soon as possible, because I know that for consistency, what we don't want to happen is, you know, we've already delayed, delayed, delayed the master plan. We want to make sure that, um, you know, we we roll full steam ahead, that we're not pushing that deadline out further so that completing the master plan is one part, but then there's a professional development that needs to follow in the implementation of the plan. And I know that the staff's working really hard on, you know, setting aside funds for implementation that we know that we're going to need as a district. But how um important it is that that work continue and that wherever we can, that Ms. Munoz can share, and I'm glad she's going to stay in the district, but share best practices with whoever's coming into that position next. So thank you all.
Can I just respond really quick? Um, so just, just an update, the job has already been posted and there are already applicants flooding in. So we we we're already on the right track. Just wanted to share that.
Amazing. Thank you.
Well, we don't see any other hands raised uh for questions. Thank you all for your work. Thank you for your presentation. Um, and thank you for engaging um with us in those amazing questions that were presented by the board directors. We appreciate you and we appreciate your continued to continued support to um support our Latinx resolutions. Thank you all.
And a shout out to Isabel. Isabel, thank you for this evening. I know how hard it is. Um, and I think you're free to go now. So.
Thank you, Isabel. We appreciate you. And thank you uh to our native Spanish speakers who joined um us tonight for that specific translation. Uh, please feel free to share feedback with us um about ways to improve it uh next time. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move to our next uh discussion item, which is our um review of staff proposals for the general fund. Um, normally I would take the opportunity to introduce this. Uh, but I'm just going to call up the players who will um, who will uh present on this item so that we can move uh pretty quickly as it is 10:03.
Uh, so on this one, the microphone goes directly to our Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Pauline Follensbee.
You're welcome, Pauline.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I'll be going through a presentation of the district's um recommendations and our um budget partners' recommendations for budget reductions and budget priorities. So I'm going to share my screen and take us through a presentation um just to give you a status report in terms of where we are. Let me do the slideshow so we get a nice big presentation. So um, the outcome, I'm just providing the board um with updating and to receive your feedback on budget reductions and priorities. I'm going to first of all, look at um, share some feedback we've received um so far from our budget partners. You received um our president, um, our BFT's comments on these um reductions and priorities as well as our PAC. So I'm going to share some other comments with you. We're going to look at the unrestricted general fund or one-time and ongoing expenses for 2022, 23, as well as 23, 24. And then we're going to look at the restricted general fund or categoricals um one-time and ongoing, and that's just priorities. There's a lot to unpack. Um, but um, I'm going to share feedback from budget partners at first. So um, it's important to note, we're nearing the end of the budget process and um we are going to be giving qualitative as well as quantitative um feedback in terms of um how we're outline, how we're presenting the budget priorities and feedback. Um, and of course, the final recommendations will come from SPAC after their meeting um on the 28th, I think, as and then we're going to bring it to the board on the 1st. Um, and as you all know, the governor released, um, they may revise on May 13th. And we are, I think, we are looking at a healthy quota of 10%, um, which is a significant um contribution to um, the base funding and supplemental funding. But at this time, I'm waiting to attend a workshop on Friday and I'll be able to unpack the entire impact. So the entire um impact of the governor's budget. So lots of moving parts. Um, we do have current recommendations um that I'm going to be sharing with you. But of course, this is going to be impacted by the governor's um may revise, which I'll be unpacking at a later date. So final decisions are scheduled for me in June, May 24th, SPAC votes on budget reductions and priorities. And I'll be bringing this back to the board for voting um on the on budget reductions and priorities on June 1st. So from um, from SPAC, um, we, the qualitative um re- review that we received, um, we had presented some ideas to SPAC that we had originally considered um um during the, for the December presentation to ACOE. So a lot of their discussions centered around the items that were removed uh from the cut list. The OFI supervisor position and the consensus from SPAC was to include it as a budget reduction. And um, and for this position to be frozen and for staffing to be decided by the new director. Um, various management models of OFI departments um were discussed. And it centered mainly between whether it should be managed at the site or should it be centrally managed um with a dotted line to site leaders. Um, and there was a word of caution that we don't want to be making program decisions in a budget committee. And um, and as you know, there was a concern of um of using consultants for um initiatives, especially if it's funded by ongoing funds and RT Fisher was mentioned, among others. Um, there was a request for College Brown. Um, they did, they wanted um additional information, not just the metrics. And of course, as strategic plan was mentioned, there was a request for a strategic plan. Um, there was a question if additional funding from the governor's budget will um will reduce the level that these that buys down in the teacher template would reduce it back to the 34 to 1 level and the response is not at this time. Um, and of course, um, there was a request and a re- um for a review on an audit of TSEs. Um, teachers on special assignment, including correct classification in position control and assessing the rules of TSEs um uh and um looking at TSEs allocation to sites through an equity lens. So a lot of um very robust discussion um among several um topics. And I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that we're not just coming up with a quantitative recommendation. There was a lot of discussion among several items. Um, feedback from the PAC, um, the PAC presented their recommendation tonight um during the, during committee comments. This is a link to their presentation. And as you know, they were focusing, and I can share that again. There were concerned about the bus driver positions. Um, and try and make this a little bit bigger. And this was shared with the board, I understand, in writing as well. So they were concerned about the bus driver positions, the virtual academy. And I think there was something else that was shared. Um, the mental health as well. Um, so we are still working with our various committee members and we will be sharing additional information as they become known. But um, it's just um this is just getting you the feedback from our committees. So then I'm going to take us through our actual um budget reductions and priorities, and we have them presented in different buckets. When we're looking at reductions, we're looking at the general fund. Um, and that tends to be the focus for our, or for SPAC. Um, usually they're focusing only on reductions. This year, they're also commenting on one-time and ongoing priorities for this year as well as for um next year. And then they're also looking at our um, our priorities using restricted funds or categorical programs. So just um, I'm going to be presenting each of these buckets. And I'm not going to go through them in, you know, line by line. I'm going to presenting them as a group. I've shared this before with the board in a slightly different format. Um, it has not changed significantly. Um, but you can see that um we're looking at budget reductions or budget balancing solutions of almost $3 million ongoing from the general fund in 22, 23. And that means we can think of those as cuts. Um, that's what we would normally call cuts, but we're, we're referring to them as bu- balance budget balancing solutions. Um, and on a one-time basis, it's on $300,000. So we're looking at $3.2 million in budget balancing solutions, and I'll be presenting that bucket to you as well. Um, as well as budget priorities. So project priorities, this is the opposite, and this is what we hope to spend money on. Um, and um, this is almost a million dollars in ongoing expenses. Um, one-time expenses um over half a million, so that's 1.5. So the delta that you can see is 1.9 million dollars um with um reductions exceeding um priorities. And in the other way, for one time, it's not quite as balanced, but overall, we have a net surplus, if you will, of 1.7 million dollars. Of course, this does not include um negotiated salary increases or the impact of the additional funding from base funding um from the information that we had before or the additional information. So this is basically um where we are at this point in time, and we know after we get the information from the governor's budget, this is going to look significantly different. Um, 23, 24, some of our initiatives that we're looking at and some of our priorities, they're multi-year. So um, they span not only in 22, 23, but some of them are going to be, we had uh multi-year suggestions. So some are going to be in 23, 24. And then in our restricted funds, you can see we have quite a lot of um budget priorities that we're using one-time and ongoing um restricted funds um in an attempt to um implement the the various priorities that I'll be sharing with you. So um, this is the link for budget reductions and priorities. So I'm going to open this link and it's going to take us through the um various buckets I just presented. Uh, let's try and make this a little bit bigger if I can. So this is a similar, um, this is part of the presentation that I I um that I just shared with you earlier. And when we're looking at our, this is a summary tab. And when we're looking at our budget reductions, I want to um, first of all, that we might actually share with you that this presentation is a little bit different, and this is the format that we'll be bringing it to you for voting in terms of looking at what are the ba- balance. in terms of looking at what are the bu- balanced budgeting solutions, and we have an explanation. We also have an impact to, um, impact on services to students. And then we have the general fund ongoing and our one time, and this is our twenty two, twenty three bucket for the general fund. And then you can see that we're starting to gather, um, um, superintendent and staff categories, we haven't categorized these as yet. Um, but then, of course, we'll also be sharing this with, um, all various bargaining groups. We will have their vote by the time we bring this back to the board on first, um, let me move over some more. Um, so we're going to get, um, solicit feedback from S back, um, the board, D lack and pack. And, um, we're going to, um, unpack these for you as we receive information from these groups. But what I want to focus on is just the various ba- balanced budgeting solutions that you have seen this list before. Um, and I will, um, just share with you this list here. We, 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 um, the last time I presented this list, we had this forty thousand dollars that was since, um, taken off the list. We didn't have enough information to kind of keep this as a budget reduction. And we do have this change, um, from S back. Staff had not recommended the, the OFI superv- supervisor position to be put on the budget reduction list. Um, when we met with S back last week, it was a general consensus that this actually should be included in the list from S back. So you wouldn't see it on the list from the staff as a staff recommendation, but it is a, an S back recommendation. Um, you can see, um, what we've had several discussions about, um, the virtual academy. The five hundred thousand, that should be familiar. The transportation department, this is what, um, this is what the lack was focusing on. We are actually, um, planning on freezing two bus driver positions and eliminating two positions. These positions have not been filled. Traditionally, we have not been able to fill these positions. And we're using this opportunity to increase all our bus drivers' positions to one point O F T E. So, um, we've discussed it with the unions, we've discussed it, obviously, this came from our transportation department. And we think this is a great idea at this time. And if there is an, an increased need for transportation, um, this will be revisited. Freezing just means for one year, in fact, we have it in the one time column. And if it's frozen in that, we're not going to be, we're not planning on filling it. But if there's a need, we'd have to revisit this, this, um, the savings that we have stored here. Um, but we think this is a great outcome for bus drivers. Um, I can, um, you can spend some time looking at this, and if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And I can go over them, um, you know, with questions as well. And then I'll take you to the, um, these are the bu- budget balancing solutions that we actually removed cons- from consideration. And this generated a lot of feedback from S back. Um, and to the extent that they felt that it should go on the budget reduction list, it will be then added back to the budget reduction list. So then that takes us to, um, the next, um, tab, let me get this out of the way. So let's look at the budget priorities, and this one, we're looking at the general fund in twenty two, twenty three. And this is, these are initiatives that the, um, that staff have come up with. And then with, these are actually ranked in terms of whether we think they're essential, desirable or least desirable. So they're ranked in terms of staff and superintendent's, um, review. And this, this essentially came through our, um, budget leadership team or BLT, um, which we meet, um, we meet, we could sometimes twice a week to discuss these priorities. So these have, um, proposals for staffing, um, including, um, a new payroll position. And these are this, the ones that scored highest with, um, the staff and the superintendent. The new workers' concrete is, um, an increase in the rate based on our actuarial study. Um, we're on the funding this program and we're thinking that, um, instead of increasing it to the recommended rate in one year, we're doing, we're kind of stepping it up, um, part in twenty two, twenty three, and part in twenty three, twenty four. Um, this, this row eight may need be revisited, we've had a lot of, um, discussions. This was a new recommendation since we met with S back. But we're going to be discussing that further, we've gotten some feedback on that. Um, and then we have the, the other items that we've scored, um, you know, what is number two, um, desirable. And then this is the, the least desirable, um, in terms of the third bucket that we're looking at. So the extent, um, um, that if we weren't going to implement anything, obviously, we'll start from the, from the, the three, the ones that we scored as number three. And then, um, you know, work our way up to number one. So to the extent that we did not, um, we weren't going to implement all of these, um, budget recommendations, we would, um, we would cut, we would, um, adjust accordingly based on our score. This list is a lot longer and a lot more in-depth and has a lot more bits and pieces to it. Again, these are investments using other funds or categoricals. Um, we have listed the source, um, and we've listed whether it's on time at one time or if it's ongoing. So, um, in terms of, um, this, this line item got, um, a lot of, you, we've got a lot of, um, comments on RT Fisher, as you know. Um, this is a new mental health coordinator, some of these are new positions. So the new positions are kind of highlighted in like a light pink. Um, the other one, most of these others, other suggestions were either prior project suggestion, um, suggestions that were funded with by one-time funding or carryover, that's no longer available. So again, these are scored by, um, a lot of work went into this and, um, and we've scored it based on the superintendent's and staff recommendation. Um, and it is a long list, and I encourage, um, the board to take a look at this. And, um, and I would be happy to go over any particular line item that you may have. But, um, it's, it's just a lot go through. Um, and the proposal is we would bring this back on the first, you can see the board is expected to review every line item. So I think, um, what we have done in the past is we've identified the items where we think there's consensus. So we can kind of, um, get those out of the way. And then we'll be discussing items that you think we, that think, um, would need additional discussion. Um, so, um, again, this is just a snapshot of where we are, we are nearing the end, um, June first. We're expecting the board to vote on this. S back is already done a lot of discussion and they, they are ready to vote on the twenty fourth. And of course, um, the feedback, I think, um, this is a feedback that we've used before. And in terms of process, um, I think we should start thinking about where we've built consensus and then where we still have questions. And on that note, I can, I'm, I'm assuming we're going to need to look at this list, I'm not going to unshare, but I can take questions.
Okay. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby. We'll take questions from the board now, board directors, if you have questions, please raise your hand. Um, I see two hands raised, so we'll begin our questions with Director Sinai, followed by Director Babett.
Uh, so before I launch in, can I just get clarity on what you're asking for us tonight? Are you actually wanting some of our feedback on the line items?
Um, yeah, it will be help, it will be helpful, um, Director Sinai.
On both the budget reductions and the additions?
Yes.
Because I guess that the question that I have is it's hard to do this without having the may revise information. Um, because I, I feel a little bit like we're going through an exercise like we did in December. What cuts are we going to make when we know more money's coming? So, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how deep it makes sense to go into this when we're not exactly sure what, what the revenues, you know, how, how the money's going to map out. So that, that's kind of my first question. And then, um, I don't know, you know, President Brown, if you want to figure out, how do we go through this line by line? I, I mean, I have one knee-jerk reaction that, um, I'm very concerned about the S backs recommendation to freeze or hold the OFI supervisor position. Also because of, um, our agreement to, to hold the equity director position until the new superintendent comes on. Because if that person comes on and then that person is figuring out, that means we're not posting in a time that we'll have someone before the school year starts. And with a associate superintendent, Aurelio leaving, I just feel like we're leaving that, that team stranded again. So I'm very hesitant to support that recommendation. Um, and I feel like I've got a good handle on what the pack thought around the budget reductions. But they haven't talked about the additions yet, so I feel like I want to hear what the pack and the D lack say before I start weighing in, because I want to hear the feedback. So I'm just trying to get a sense of the sequence. And then the last question is, um, June first is first reading, right? Is there a follow-up vote on the fifteenth? Is, is there two actions or just one on the budget?
Um, we're, we're hoping there would just be one, because, um, based on that vote, the fifteenth will be bringing back a preliminary budget with whatever has been voted on included in that budget.
Okay, so the first, we're not voting on the budget, we're voting on these pieces that then get populated into the budget.
Correct.
So I, I think we're, um, I totally understand how the timing is crunched the way it is. But basically, as a group, we're not going to hear feedback from our committees until the day we're supposed to vote on it. I mean, we'll hear from it individually, we'll, we'll hear from it individually from the superintendent. But as a group, we'll, we'll not have been able to hear from each other. Um, until we're, we're all hearing that, um, from the first time, which I think is, is really hard. I mean, usually we're chewing on the summary of recommendations in May. And then we're having the, then we're making the action vote and we're, I feel like we're skipping a meeting. Um, where we've actually been able to talk about those recommendations together. And I don't know if we want to entertain an extra meeting just to talk about budget. But, um, so I'm feeling a little uncomfortable weighing in on line items when I haven't heard from our, our pack and our, and our D lack.
Okay. I missed that. Let me go back to.
And if I could, um, Director Sinai, I might jump in on just, uh, two of your earlier sort of questions or points. Um, the first had to do with the, the timing of news about the new revenue from the state and how it might impact our thinking about those general fund reductions. I think that was the first question that you were asking. Um, and I.
As well as the additions, just like how it interplays.
Yeah, so, so we are expecting, um, you know, uh, news of significant new revenue, you know, well beyond the six point five percent cola. Um, we don't know exactly what that looks like, but guesses are around ten percent. Um, our feeling about the current list of reductions as, as they're, you know, sort of populated in the spreadsheet is that these, these represent sensible reductions to spending, many of which kind of fall in the category of efficiencies, just, you know, improved services for, for less money. Uh, and that staff would continue to recommend those changes to general fund spending, even if, uh, the ten percent cola becomes true. Um, there's one item on that reduction list that I think, just in the name of transparency, I want to call out, and that is the, the current recommendation to discontinue funding for the virtual academy. Um, that because we had said, uh, a year ago that this was intended to really see us through the period when vaccines were not available. Uh, but that clearly is no longer the case, and so it will continue to be staff's recommendation to discontinue that funding. Um, that is a decision, obviously, for the board, but, um, in terms of staff recommendation, I imagine that the remainder of those general fund reductions will remain in place even with the, the increased revenue from the state.
Vice President Babett.
I agree with, um, Director Sinai that this feels like the exercise in December, because we know that there's, um, more money, significant funds for also COVID. Um, I am looking so forward to thanking, um, the governor, once all of that comes out. And, um, the CSBA, because, um, they really provided avenues for us to advocate as board members. Uh, we took advantage and it looks like the advocacy is paying off. And so I'm, um, really excited and proud to see that this work, um, because we know it's going to benefit our students. Long-term success. And I do see that, um, this, um, with the reductions tab, I guess, we're saying these are recommended by S back, like the OFI position, but it's not actually in the S back column. And I don't actually see right now what's in the superintendent or staff category column. Unless I'm supposed to be looking at the one that, the tab that says priorities one or two. Um, so I would definitely appreciate a, um, does that mean? No.
No, nothing.
I would definitely appreciate a meeting, um, where we have real time to, um, to discuss all of these avenues. And I also think that, um, it's a little un- it would be helpful, I think, for the S back community to really hear some of the, um, data from, um, our African-American success framework, from all of our listening sessions, from the C S A's plan. Um, because all of that data really speaks to why some of these things shouldn't be on their lists. And now that information really speaks to why we are doing some of this outsourcing. Um, uh, time and time and time and time and time again, we hear culturally relevant curriculum, culturally relevant training, cultural competency training, 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 training. So as long as we're in the stage where we have to train most of our actual BUSD employees, there's a certain time where I have to still meet the needs of the kids who need culturally relevant instruction, culturally competent training, culturally relevant curriculums. And that needs to be delivered right now, not, you know, our kids can't wait. And they've been waiting, and this has been going on for multiple years. So, and then in our C S A's plan, for our C S A's plan, written by our staff, to say, we have educators who are even unwilling to look at their own implicit and explicit bias. That's a huge red flag. And so I know some of the members on that S back committee, if they heard and understood why we are using some of these culturally relevant outsources. And if you compare it cost per student, it's actually cheaper than trying to do some of this in-house at the same time. So there's a lot of information that I'm not sure that they have. And I also want to let the community know that the S back is primarily, um, comprised of union leaders. Um, they're the loudest voices in the room, so they have a special, specific interest, which might not always relate specifically to our, our students' needs or our equity focus needs. And so that's why for me, I appreciate having their information in their category. But I agree with Director Sinai that we as a board have to take all of this information. We have to hear from PAC, we have to hear from D lack. And we have to take the information that we have from all of our parent community in our listening circles and, uh, and really have time to weigh that into our decision-making. So not really a question, but I do appreciate, um, the thoughtfulness of all the work that you're doing, um, Associate Superintendent Pauline Fallinsby. Um, but I did have one actual question, because I have been attending some of these S back meetings as well. And I'm just wondering, is there anything new or anything on this list that we haven't seen before besides things taken off? Like, is there any new item that's been put on to the list?
Um.
For a reduction that maybe we haven't seen as a board?
I don't think so. Um, Brent, did we add anything? I don't think we did.
No, that's, that you're, you're correct, Pauline, that, um, with this reduction list, um, we're looking at the same ideas that we have been now for, you know, probably about two months.
Okay, great. And so, um, if there is a way to take some of the, the data, some of the synapses, even- even to have a presentation from what the Listening Circle's work has been doing for the African-American Success Framework so that they understand, because they really do need to understand because it's not helpful if there's mixed messaging going out to our educators around what we're actually trying to do as a board, especially when it relates to our equity goals. So we may want to consider taking some time to really have that conversation with them around the data, the quantitative and anecdotal data, so that they can see why we as a board make certain decisions and why they are needed. And I really don't want to have to line people up on the microphone to say what we've already been saying for years. Like, we know that parents have been advocating for years for many of these things that we are just now getting to. But if we have to go back to telling y'all what we've been telling y'all year after year, we can line them up for public comment. It's just, we could also make good decisions as a board because we have the information. And so we need to have the time and the information. And our educators need to also have this kind of information that we've been gathering all year as well. Thank you for listening.
I, I appreciate that, Director Babett. I guess just a sort of a quick point about process, you know, as we populate the graph that, that is currently displayed on the screen, I'm anticipating that there's going to be differing perspectives coming from our different communities. You know, there may be some differences between an SBA view and a staff recommendation. For example, we already know on the OFI supervisor that there are diverging viewpoints on the OFI supervisor and that nonetheless, the staff recommendation will be to maintain that. That, that's a difference that's already emerging between the SBA sort of view of things and our own. And then of course, there may be differing perspectives between the board and the staff recommendations. And that's all a natural part of this process.
Director Alper.
Thanks, President Brown. Thanks, Assistant Superintendent Paulinsby for this presentation and for, you know, shepherding all this work. I just had two comments. One, I guess, I guess on the, on the, on the question about consultants, you know, versus our own staff, it seems like one area of data that would be helpful, that sounds like there's some dispute about, and, and I just don't know, is on the, the cost per student because President Meyer and Vice President Babett were, you know, said kind of differing views about the relative cost per student. And I think that's at least one data point that seems probably easy to get that would be useful as, as she said, to, you know, to, to share with the board and the community on at least some of the programs, like the, I think like the middle school summer program where there might be a, you know, a direct comparison that, that could be made. That might be helpful. I, on the, I just wanted to make a comment about the virtual academy. And I met with some of the teachers and families who have been coming to the board in a sort of ad hoc office hours the other day. And it, and, and the stories are, are incredibly compelling and as, as I told them, it's really gratifying actually to hear people, you know, praise so highly of, you know, one of our programs and, and praise the teachers in the program and how meaningful it's been to their kids and to have the kids talk about it as well. So I was very compelled by it. At the same time, they were very upfront about the fact that, you know, what they're asking for is, is not just a one-time extension of a, of this program, but it, but a continuation of this program in perpetuity. And that there's no, you know, there's no principled reason why it would, if we continued it for next year, that we wouldn't continue it for the next year. I wanted to see what their views were about that and they were really clear about, about that, which was helpful and clarifying for me. Because I, I, my instinct, Dr. Stevens, is that it's not, it seems more appropriate to put that item, maybe this is just semantics, but more appropriate to put that item in the budget priorities than the budget cuts. Because it was always, we created it this year, as you said a moment ago, for one year. We, we never expected it to go beyond one year. And so it's not cutting the program to, to not fund it next year. The question is, do we want to expend on an ongoing basis $500,000 for this program for, for, for how many students it serves? And, and that's a question that I think Director Sinai said this earlier, way, it seems like hour, it was hours ago, at the beginning of the meeting. You know, that, that's a, that's a, that's a budget priority that I think we have to weigh with everything else. So I would rather see it in that category. And, and I think it's, you know, the, and I think the unfortunate reality is that it's a very expensive program for, to serve, to serve and serve well, a very small number of students. And, and, and I think just to be transparent about where my own views are, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to vote to, to add that as an ongoing expensive of half a million dollars. I was going to say something else, but I guess I, I think I lost it. I guess I'll stop there. Thanks, President Brown.
No problem. We can come back to you. Director Alper, I think most, most of those were, were comments. But is there a question in there that I want to give space for Associate Superintendent Paulinsby to answer?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, no. I have another question, just.
Okay. Sorry, I thought, I thought the question was about where we were moving it, to put it.
That was just a comment, a suggestion.
Director Vassadif, you ready?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the comments made by Director Sinai, just to, I'd like to see, you know, the impacts of the May revise and also just to hear from D-LAC because we haven't heard, you know, there, anything from that committee yet on the budget. And so I'd love to hear their, their formal recommendations. And it does feel like, this does feel like we, we missed a meeting, like we're rushing stuff. So, and I, and I like the idea that Director Albert presented over like the cost per student for the, you know, the contracted services versus what we can do in-house, just to better understand the data around that would be helpful for the board.
And thank you, Director Vassadif. Go ahead, Director Alper.
I just wanted to add to what I think Director Sinai said about, and Director Vassadif too, but not just, we don't have the May revise, but also we're in the middle of negotiating with, with our four unions. And so that's, that's a huge unknown number, just like the May revises. You know, the, the ramifications of that are not completely known. This is even more unknown. And I think warrants sort of caution in, in, in maybe a slightly different way than Director Sinai was saying. But, but, but I think we would all agree that, that, that we need to keep that in mind as we consider particularly any new expenses.
I'll go back to you, Vice President Babett.
Thank you so much. I also wanted to add that not only do we have cost per student comparisons, but we need to think about our internal ability to attract staff, to retain staff and to get our own internal staff to do some of this extra work. For example, for years, we have tried to have early back programs with BUSD staffs as our primary providers. And we've been unable to have BUSD staff actually want to do these roles, right? So we also have to think about our structural impacts, which will prohibit us from actually providing these needed services when we talk about the extreme learning loss and all of these other things. And so that's another reason why we can't just say, oh, we can do this stuff in-house. Because for years, we actually haven't been able to attract and retain staff to do a lot of this stuff in-house. And when we have, we've, we've overburdened some staff who are just so willing to do everything. And next thing you know, they're at 1.8 and point two this for this job and point seven for that job. And so we don't want to actually get into that position either because we know that our teachers need the time to be refreshed. Our teachers need the time to, to be prepared, to relax and to, to come back full speed off as well during the year to do, to meet all of the wonderful demands that they really do meet. They really have been super superheroes, especially pre and post, during and post pandemic this last year. And so we definitely want to also make sure that yes, let's do the cost analysis, but let's also not forget our own internal struggles that we have with hiring of staff for these positions. Thanks.
I don't see any other questions from board direction, from board directors. I will work with our superintendent to hopefully get us an additional special meeting that will focus primarily on budget as made requested by the Board, Board of Directors tonight. So thank you, Assistant Superintendent Paulinsby, for your work on this as always and for your engagement with our communities, especially with the SBA. So thank you, we appreciate you and we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
We will move to our first action item of the night, and that's the approval of the 2022-2023 BSEP BARA Program Plan and Budget for Communication, Translation and Measure Oversight. So here for this presentation this evening is Director Kathy Fleming. And so please welcome Director Fleming. We're happy to have you back again.
President Brown, should we extend the meeting? I don't know how long her presentation is scheduled for.
It is, it is 10:45, so we should go ahead and extend the meeting. Is there a motion to, thank you, Director Sinai, is there a motion to?
I would move, do, do we think 11:10 or 11:40, 11:15 would be adequate for, for the BSEP budgets? Or do we need more?
Director Fleming, do you think that that is enough time? We do have one additional action item, which is just a really quick public hearing.
Well, our two presentations are five and seven slides. So it really depends on the level of discussion after the presentations. I believe there are five minutes each.
Okay. To be safe, let's just extend, extend the meeting to, get out my brain. Extend the meeting to 11:30, knowing that we don't necessarily have to go until 11:30, but we have the flexibility to do so if necessary. All right, Director Fleming, one second.
We need to move it, second it.
Once, Director Fleming, we call for the motion. We need to second it and then we'll get into your presentation. Is there a second to this motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Vice President Babett. Ms. Body, else, can you please call the roll?
The second, student must go in, yes, one.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babett.
Yes.
President.
Yes, thank you. All right, take it away.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. Thank you, President Brown. And I have a slide deck. I'm on my laptop, so I have not much real estate, so bear with me. Oops. Wrong one, okay. Can everyone see the slide deck? President Brown, thumbs up. I see, okay, great. Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you, President Brown. Good evening, Board of Directors. I'd also like to welcome our incoming Superintendent Niki Ford-Morthow. We are so fortunate to have her join our team and I look forward to us working together again. So great big shout out for, for that. And also a big thanks to our outgoing superintendent, Dr. Stevens, and our outgoing associate superintendent, Aurelio. I really appreciated this year we spent together and learned from both of you. And I wish you great luck in your next, your next gigs. So moving on, tonight, we have two plans for your approval, two separate items. This first item, as, as President Brown mentioned, is the plan for next year for communication, translation and measure oversight. Just a reminder, a quick overview of our two measures. Since, since 1986, voters have supported BSEP to provide additional support to schools for smaller class size, student support programs, music, libraries and budgets for school sites. And BARA was passed in 2020 to help recruit and retain qualified teachers and prevent shortages of essential school staff by addressing educator recruitment and retention, building more pathways for both classified and certificated staff so that our students are supported by a stable team of highly qualified professionals. And a shout out again to our great Planning and Oversight Committee who engage in extensive work and oversight of the BSEP and BARA funds and extensive vetting of the plans, including the two before you tonight. The group has met over 12 times this year with program managers multiple times and reviewed annual reports as well as plans for next year and was also able to provide level of feedback. That's well received. And here we have the framework for BSEP again, as we did last time. And just to remind you, at our last meeting on May 4th, we approved the majority of the BSEP programs and the high-quality instruction program area, Essentials for Excellence and Effective Student Support. The school site program budgets are embedded in, in the school site plans, which will be on the board agenda for June 1st. Tonight, we're going to focus on the 2% section at the bottom of your screen, which provides funds for the oversight, communication and translation of BSEP. And essentially, the budgets remain somewhat unchanged from the current year, except for a slight increase in salaries and benefits due to step in column. And any changes are highlighted throughout the slide decks. And also the detailed plans are available on board docs. And together with the 2% from BSEP, we have 1% from BARA to help contribute to the oversight activities of BSEP and BARA. And the 5% program area, we will hear from, that, that's our second action item tonight, 14.2. And our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Samantha Tobias Espinoza, will be presenting that after this presentation. A staffing summary largely unchanged. The staff is critical in supporting the communications and translations, as well as the work of the Planning and Oversight Committee. In addition, the staff also works to support, support school site councils and site budgeting processes. And the one change we have is the increase for the communication specialists from a 0.6 this year to a 1.0 for next year. And this is due to the increased need for communications resources due to bulk and the bulk and complexity of COVID communications and the necessity to increase affinity-based outreach, heritage month celebrations, the volume of press requests increased and a more strategic effort to share the district's good news across a variety of communication challenges, channels. And the last slide for this presentation has the detailed budgets for both the BSEP 2% and the BARA 1%. And in addition to staffing, we have funding for services and consultants to support mainly communications and translations, but also some expenditures for the oversight of the measures. And that concludes my presentation. And now I will stop sharing screen.
Thank you, Director Fleming. Board Directors, are there questions? Director Sinai and then Director Babett, by themselves, sorry, Vice President Babett.
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to appreciate the, the translation as well as the additional communication support. And really just say to my board colleagues, one of the things that I miss so much is when Mark Copeland used to be at all of the events around schools and we really got to see just online what was happening all the time with the various events and the various programs. And so I know now that we are, we're more text-heavy in our communication requests. And I'm really hoping that we can somehow get back to that highlighting photographically of all of the, the wonderful things that happen at our school sites. Because that's what translates us into remembering all of the great things that happened also, even though we're looking at data and trying to make all these improvements and, you know, shift focus and improve our trends on academic success and outcomes for students long-term. So hoping that we can also consider in future recommendations, how we can fund that type of work to, to come back to BUSD. I was talking to President Brown about it and she was like, yep, I'm able to see myself 13 years ago from all of the pictures and photographs that we, we had of the actual live events that were taking place on campus. So it's much better than 15-minute Equity Showcase. We can see it all the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Babett, Babett, for that comment. Thank you, Vice President Babett, for that comment. Senior Communications Officer Trish McDermott is here, and I, I would imagine that our new Communication Specialist might be able to work in that area to some degree, but Trish, you may have something to add to that.
Thank you, Director Fleming. And I think, Vice President Babett, you raise a really important issue, and that falls under this idea of doing a better job of sharing our good stories. So this is definitely uplifting and profiling our students, but also our staff, and how our, our schools are functioning really in our community. This is really a bandwidth issue and nothing else. Communications has taken on the bulk of the management of COVID, which tends to be text-heavy, tends to be information-driven. But we do have a vision with staffing for next year to go back to pictures and videos and really good stories about our students and their achievements across the district.
I thank you, Vice President Babett, for that question. Also, Trish, thank you so much for being here to respond. Director Sinai, it is your turn now.
It is my turn now. I was just chatting away with my mic off last time, but I want to echo Vice President Babett around the Communication Specialist at a full-time FTE for a little different reason. I mean, I, I think elevating the, the good stories is something that we really need to do. And I really, Trish, have such tremendous respect and, and appreciation for all the work that you have done, because even if you wanted to, you couldn't, because you, it was COVID, all things COVID, and I think you really stepped up and not only coordinated, you know, again with, you know, former Director Barry, but, you know, in the last year of just making sure really important communication went out. So at some point, hopefully, we can elevate it to those good stories. But I think the other part is just having really deep and good communication with our parent community and our staff community. You know, whether it's communication around the Capital Project Development at Longfellow, communication around different, you know, activities that we're doing. It's, it's, it's the elevating the good stories, and it's making sure we have a coherent communication strategy for things beyond COVID. But my question is, does that person exist yet, or is it still a vacant position?
Yes, this is a vacant position. We attempted to hire at .6 this year, and the process was slow, and the posting was a little confusing. So we did identify a candidate and offered the position to that candidate, who then subsequently turned it down. And we had identified a second candidate who did the same thing. So, we are researching, or, you know, starting that process again. We are moving it to a .1 position, because the scope of the work has only increased over the last year. And I am confident that at a full-time position that we can hire someone before the start of the new school year.
Great. I, I think it's really important.
Director Fleming, I don't see any other questions from the School Board Director. So why don't we go ahead and do the vote on this one, okay? Is there a motion to approve? Let me make sure I call it out appropriately for our record sake. But is there a motion to approve the 2022-2023 BSEP-BARRA Program Plan and Budget for Communication, Translation, and Measure Oversight?
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Vice President Babett. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Again, Director Sinai.
Yes, but don't forget our student director.
Oh, yes, thank you. Student Director Mascariña Swan.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babett.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. And next, we will move on to the approval of the 2022-2023 BSEP-BARRA Program Plan and Budget specifically for Educator Recruitment, Retention, and Development. Director Fleming, over to you.
Okay, thank you, President Brown. We're going to have our Assistant Superintendent Samantha Tobias-Espinoza share her screen and present the slide deck for you tonight.
There we go. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
The new button kit was hard to get to click off. Thank you, Director Fleming. So, BARRA, the Educator Recruitment and Retention Act, set aside 5% of the available revenues towards helping us to recruit, to fill our hard-to-staff positions, provide professional development and career pathways for our paraprofessionals and classified staff, and help us to enhance our support programs for both our new teachers and our veteran teachers. Within this budget, we have FTE as well as funds set aside to pay for contracts and items, including stipends. We have two full-time positions. Both are filled. Classified Professional Development Support Position and a Special Education Development IEP Coach. We also cover a .4 of a District Induction Coach, which supports our brand-new teachers who are just getting their credentials. A .1 Peer Assistance and Review Coach, which helps our veteran teachers who are struggling. We have a .2 that helps support our classified employees who are reaching for a credential. And a .7, that is a TSA position to support us in all of our efforts in terms of recruitment, retention, and support of our educators. In terms of funding, a few weeks ago, you approved an application for us to work with the Almeti County Office, County Office of Education on a teacher residency program to support us in filling some hard-to-fill jobs. And that provide, we're providing through BARRA $69,000 to support that. $20,000 goes to each candidate, teacher candidate, and $3,000 to each mentor, coach that's supporting those candidates. We have $30,000 to help us with our recruitment materials, supplies, and contracts. And then $50,000 set aside for Recruitment and Retention stipends, including stipends for the mentors for induction, teachers for our coaches for other positions, as well as the stipends that help support our BPAR program in terms of the members of the committee for that group. We've made some changes as we go into the third year of this program. So as I already mentioned, we did do, sign up to do this teacher residency program that will help us to fill positions that have been notoriously hard to fill for teachers. We have reduced the Peer Assistance and Review Coach by a .1. It used to be a .2. And that's because we only have one teacher who will be in that program next year. And we put that extra .1 FTE towards our TSA position. The Classified Employee Teacher Pathway, which is BPACT. We are continuing that program. We have applied for, or are applying for a new grant. Our grant expires in June and are hoping to be able to continue that program at the same level it currently is at. We are partnering with our Teachers of Color Network to continue to work on things. Two of our teachers of color attended, and were very helpful at our hiring fair that happened this March, as well as our TSA was a major support for that event in helping us get everything pulled together and helping us to hold that event in person to be able to meet candidates and interview and set up appropriate things. It actually helped us even find a physics teacher for next school year, which was something we desperately needed for the high school. And we are continuing to contract with UC Berkeley to provide leadership coaching and support for both our certificated and classified Leaders of Color Network. Some recruitment data. So, this school year, 34.1% of all of our teachers are considered teachers of color, self-identified. Of all of our new hires in the last two years, we've been about 48% of each year. And as of 2021 school year, we had retained 85% of those teachers of color that we've hired in previous years. We don't know yet how many we've retained beyond for the next year. Our BPAC program that we talked about, which is our classified staff becoming credentialed teachers, we have a grant that expires this June for 12 participants. In 2021, we had 10 of those 12 participants were self-identified as BPOC. Two of the people decided not to state their identity. We didn't collect data on their desired areas to teach in 2021, but in 2122, nine of the 12 are in our hard-staff areas. In 2120, in 2021, three of the people in our program received their preliminary credentials, and we were able to hire all three of those people. We also were able to hire in this year somebody who had left our program previously, even though they had graduated from our BPAC program, gone to another district, and then came back to us. So we were able to rehire them. We have projected a one person who will be earning their preliminary credential this year, and we are hoping to secure them as a future teacher as well. And we don't have our data yet, of course, for next school year. This is the overall budget. You'll see our revenue is $516,000. Our budget actually exceeds that, but that's really okay, because, because of COVID, we have a pretty large fund balance for the amount of money that we have taken in revenues every year. So we are going to be using some of that fund balance in this next year to help us to continue some of these programs. And that's the end of the presentation. Questions?
Yes, we'll go over to the Board for questions. Sam, thanks for joining us for this presentation. And also thanks to our community members who, through their voices and their votes, made this a possibility for, for educators. We, you know, take that opportunity, not as robbery, but as something that we want to say thank you for. And, and so, yeah, we, we have to take the time to pause and celebrate that. Okay, Vice President Babett, and then Director Sinai.
Thank you so much. I want to really appreciate the, the personal approach with the recruitment efforts and for making it happen. So, celebrating the success and also thankful again to the community for helping to pass this measure. My comment is more around the, the early identification of potential teachers and, and how we stay connected. As we have students who are graduating from Berkeley High School, they may be going many places. But if we are able to develop some kind of pipeline where we see them through, you know, many of them are, are going to be liberal arts majors. They may be planning to be in education. I think it would be helpful if we could somehow think of a way to, to keep track of them and mentor and support them during their four-year college process. And hopefully, they too can also come back and maybe not only be president of the board, but be an educator for BOSD. So, just wanted to throw that suggestion out there and appreciate you all for the work.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. And if I could just add to that, I think it would be appropriate for us as well to think about a teacher pathway of, creating one in our school system right now as we do with our CTE pathways. I think that will also be a way to capture students and get them to come back and recycle their success in BOSD. Director Sinai?
Yeah, thank you, and echo Vice President Babett's comments. Can, can you go back the slide that has the data on the recruitment? For the, the?
BPAC.
BPAC. I'm just trying to understand unduplicated numbers or duplicated numbers. So in 2021, 22, or in those two years, we had 12 people enrolled in the program. And, and then three who earned the credential, preliminary credential. Did we hire them?
Yes, they're in, now in this box.
Three, okay. And then the one projected, is that one of the nine above it?
It's one of the, the current 12. So, what, the one box that I skipped over is that out of these 12, three actually got their credentials, two decided not to continue with the program for financial reasons. And so we have five spots that we filled this year. And out of those, it refilled it back up to 12 again.
Does that make sense? Can you be in it for more than one year?
Yes, it's a multi-year program.
So it would, it would be helpful for future, you know, like when we do this is to be able to see like what the unduplicated numbers are. So, and then, so that we can follow the path in the system, and then how many were hired kind of thing, and how many, how many did drop out?
Yeah.
Just to kind of paint the picture a little bit fuller, because it's really exciting. It's a really exciting program. And it will also help us identify like, you know, trends and what we might need to do to, you know, beef it up or, you know, like what the average length of time is that people are in it. But just some ideas. So anyway, I think, great, great information. I'm just trying, was trying to understand it a little bit more.
Yeah, and, and like, what I can work on is also sharing more information about BPAC and, and all of that with the board also in multiple ways.
If I could ask, in terms of, I appreciate the conversations around recruitment, but I would also like to talk about retention, especially for our teachers of color. We know that an additional factor of why we can't retain or why we haven't been able to retain teachers of color at the highest levels have a lot to do with culture and social, social isolation that is felt in the, the school systems. I'm speaking from my, you know, my own experience and hopefully projecting the voices of others who have also experienced the same thing. So what thought has been put into, to creating, you know, culturally appropriate and relevant programs and spaces so that we can support our teachers of color and ultimately retain them?
So that's one of the major projects that we work with our Teachers of Color Network with. So, Teachers of Color Network is one of, is a group that is, comes to us through the teachers' union. And so we meet with them, our TSA meets with them to gather ideas, to talk about these kind of topics, what we can do to better support our teachers, what kind of things actually help to retain them and what kind of things it, for lack of a better way, drive them away. And so we talk about those types of things in terms of how can we make things better. And of course, one of the big pieces is the climate and the culture within the district. And so that's one of our projects that we're also working on, which of course wouldn't fit just within this budget, but is something bigger and wider that we need to work on across the whole district.
Okay, thank you. Any other Board Director questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the 2022-2023 BSEP-BARRA Program Plan and Budget specifically for Educator Recruitment, Retention, and Development?
I will move to approve.
It's been moved by Vice President Babett. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
First, Student Director Mascariña Swan.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes. Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yeah.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you. I thank you both so much for the presentation. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. All right, we will move to item fourteen point three, which is the Public Hearing for Initial Proposals Proposals for Successor, for the Successor Agreement between the Union of Berkeley Administrators, UBA, and the District. Is there anyone here um, for public comments specifically on this public hearing item? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion uh, to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Si- Sinai, excuse me, Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Muscatina Swan.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yeah.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you. All right, we will move to our second opportunity for public comment. There is anyone here for uh, the second opportunity, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, then we also move to the second opportunity for Board Member Comments. If you have any comments, please raise your hands.
Or don't.
Seeing no hands, we will now move towards adjournment. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Bye.